Okay, we are live on YouTube.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 23, 2021 Public Hearing, Public Meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the role. Chair Carol.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron. Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson, you're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Letfy.
Here.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, we're all set.
Great, thank you, Rich. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 23 Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Today, we will start the day with hearings for two properties that we are proposing for designation, and that will be followed by a public meeting for applications for work on designated properties that have already had a public hearing and are back today with revised designs. And then the public meeting agenda will be followed by our public hearing agenda for new applications. And this hearing and meeting are being held via Zoom and livestream on YouTube. So if you'd like to watch the proceedings, please visit our YouTube channel to watch the livestream. And if you would like to testify on any of the hearing items, please join the meeting at the estimated time for that item is shown on our hearing agenda. And our, our public hearing agendas can be found on our website. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Research, Kate Limos McHale, to take us through the designation hearing agenda.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. The first item this morning is LP 2649, Holy Root Episcopal Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz, at 715 West 179th Street, Manhattan, Block 2176, Lot 30. Item proposed for a public hearing is the proposed designation of a Gothic Revival-style church designed by Bannister and Shell and built in 1911 to 16 that has played an important role in the Latino community of Washington Heights. Holy Root Episcopal Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz, is architecturally significant as a sophisticated and well-executed Gothic Revival design by the architectural firm of Bannister and Shell, and historically and culturally significant as an important social and religious anchor for the Washington Heights Latino community for the past 40 years. When built in 1911 to 16, the church's congregation reflected the stability and resources of the Washington Heights neighborhood as it transitioned to a thriving residential area. It has remained an important institution within the neighborhood, its congregation changing to reflect the influx of residents from Dominican Republic and Puerto Rico and other Spanish-speaking places, starting in the 1960s. By 2012, in recognition of its role in this community, the church changed its historic name to add its Spanish translation, becoming Holy Root Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz. Excuse me. Recently, it has expanded its outreach by also becoming a center for the hearing impaired with services and programs in American Sign Language. Sited on the corner of West 179th Street and Fort Washington Avenue, the freestanding church is located directly across the street from the George Washington Bridge Bus Station. The proposed landmark site consists of the tax lot. Holy Root Church was established in 1893 by Reverend William O. Embry, chaplain at a nearby home for girls. Henry C. Potter, the Episcopal bishop at the time, encouraged the establishment of additional parishes within the diocese as the population of the city increased dramatically. Holy Root was established in Upper Manhattan, anticipating the population growth that was to follow within the next 20 years. In 1895, the congregation built its first church, a rambling stone building, in what was then a country setting. The 1898 fire insurance map in the middle of this slide shows its location at Broadway and 181st Street. In 1911, the congregation bought property along Fort Washington Avenue for the site of the present-day church, indicated by the green triangle on each of these maps. The first service was held in 1913 in a partially constructed sanctuary, shown on the map on the right. This map also shows the residential development of the neighborhood by 1913. Holy Root's new church was completed in 1916 and finally dedicated in 1917, becoming one of the most impressive and beautiful churches in the neighborhood. Holy Root quickly gained a reputation for inclusiveness and humanitarian causes. In 1919, shortly after the new church was dedicated, the congregation welcomed Gustav Carstensen as their rector. He had previously resigned from his former parish because they did not welcome black children from a nearby orphan asylum to the worship services. He was known in his day as very progressive and often came to support causes that were unpopular with some of his fellow clergy. As noted in 1941 article, under his leadership, Holy Root became one of the leading churches in Washington Heights, and as ministry and outreach programs continue to champion inclusiveness to this day. In the 1920s and 30s, the neighborhood attracted a large number of Greeks, Irish, and Jewish people who settled there in increasing numbers, many escaping political turmoil in Europe. In the 1950s and 60s, the area began to attract a large population of Spanish-speaking people, with many coming from Puerto Rico and Cuba. By the 1980s, Dominicans became the dominant Spanish-speaking cultural group in northern Manhattan. Political changes beginning in the 60s finally allowed people to leave the Dominican Republic after many years of repression. They settled in Washington Heights in large numbers, where the cost of housing was more affordable and public transportation provided convenient connections to Lower Manhattan. The Dominican Day Parade began in 1981 in Washington Heights, celebrating their culture and contributions to the city. By 2000, the Latino population represented 75% of the population of Washington Heights and Inwood, with Dominicans making up the majority of these residents. In 2018, the neighborhood was officially honored as Little Dominican Republic. The ceremony shown here highlighted this commercial and cultural designation. Since 1988, the church has provided facilities for the Dominican Women's Development Center, an independent nonprofit that advances gender equality, social justice, education, and similar causes. Even more recently, the parish has become actively involved in an important humanitarian effort with the new sanctuary program, offering a safe haven and help for immigrants in need. In addition to these programs, the parish has recently added programs and services for the hearing impaired, one of only a small handful in the New York Diocese. The church is celebrating its 125th anniversary and has continued to serve as an anchor and resource to the residents of the predominantly Latino neighborhood. Recently, the church included Iglesias Santa Cruz as part of its name to express its dual identity. The medieval English word "holy root" and the Spanish "Santa Cruz" both translate to "holy cross." In 2012, an article about the parish noted, "Our members represent the diversity of the neighborhood, mostly Latinos, some West Indians, and some young Anglo-professionals." William F. Bannister and Richard M. Shell designed Holy Root Church. Their firm designed a broad range of buildings, including many religious properties in the New York City area. Articles written about the new building reported that its design was inspired by Hereford Cathedral, shown here on the right, and indeed, the West End is remarkably similar. The architectural design of the church is a Gothic Revival style that was often preferred by the Episcopal Church, with its 19th century interest in English medieval design. The front-facing gable terminates a tall nave with buttressed side aisles and clear-story windows. Tall pinnacles frame the main window and extend far beyond the parapet, creating a striking appearance on the skyline. Shown here is the south-facing facade that incorporates the parish house, visible at the far-right corner. As illustrated in comparison with the tax photograph on the right, the church building today looks very much the same as it did in 1940. Dominating the entrance facade is an impressive, tall, arched stained glass window with delicate geometric stone tracery. The filigree Gothic details and terracotta at the front facade contrast dramatically with the quarry-faced stone along the side that has a more rugged appearance. A narrow parking lot to the north of the church building was originally intended to accommodate a small chapel that was never built. Minor alterations include signage and security lighting, replacement side doors, window protectors covering historic windows and tracery, and the installation of ramps and railings for universal access to the sanctuary and side entrances. Today, Holy Root Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz, is remarkably intact with excellent integrity of design and materials. This outstanding example of a Gothic Revival church has served Washington Heights since its construction over 100 years ago, and continues to serve the diverse, predominantly Latino, community, offering services and programs in Spanish as well as English. During the past 40 years, it has expanded its community outreach and continues its tradition of humanitarian and culturally diverse programs to people of all ages, the LGBTQ community, the hearing impaired, and the homeless and hungry. The Research Department recommends that Holy Root Episcopal Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz, be designated a New York City landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Kate before we move to public testimony? Okay, great. I think we don't have any questions, so I'm going to turn to our Executive Director, Lisa Kersavage, to walk us through the testimony. If you're here in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance, and then we will get to everyone else. And so with that, Lisa, why don't you go ahead and take us through the testimony?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I am going to start with Holy Root TV. So I'm going to bring you into meeting as a panelist. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. Okay, I'm going to ask you to unmute, if that helps. And we can see you, and I bet we can hear you. Is this Father Barrios?
Yes, you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
It's good to be here. Beautiful to listen to Kate sharing the history of the church. I just want to add first, so grateful that all of you are taking very seriously this historical contribution that this church has been making and still making in the community. I think it's very important to highlight that we are a sanctuary church. We used to have a family from Guatemala. We were giving then resident inside the church challenging eyes and those laws that we understand, and are fair enough. Right now, we have a family from Honduras, and it's incredible the history of this family here. They've been here for two years. So we end up also having a baby here. In the church, it's a very young couple, so the Abigail is only one year old. So it's so painful that she was born in sanctuary, but it's so beautiful that the church took that responsibility. So it's a sanctuary church, not only for the LGBTQ community, the homeless. We have a serious issue with drug users, and we want them to find a place so they can talk. But also, we want to highlight that during the pandemic, from the first day, this was one of the unique places that never closed the door. By the contrary, we decided we are going to open seven days a week. That, of course, forced us to do a lot of disinfecting and everything, but the community was so helpful, helping us with all this. So more and more, the building is becoming like a community center. People feel that they are welcome. People who believe in God, people who worship other traditions, and people who do not believe in God because they like to come and to chat. And now, we also became some kind of sanctuary for a lot of, it's a whole transition in this community. So we have a lot of young musicians. So they found that the church can be available for rehearsal. So we have about 11 professional musicians rehearsing here inside the church, and once in a while, we put something together so we can impact the community because we believe that music is a healing process. So all that, the church opened as a place for worship, but also pastoral care and support, and that people can come and pray. It's been so incredible. So we never close. We don't have any plans to close, and we're still making a significant contribution. And then the other is that we became, we used to have a full pantry on Friday. Now, we have five days a week supplying food. There's the hope, the pandemic is hitting very strongly, this particular issue. This is a very strong working-class, poor community. So the church became a center for full distribution, and we feel so proud that we can respond. In other words, this is the church that, like we say from the beginning, the church needs to be in the community, not the community inside the church. If they want to come to church, that's their decision. If they don't want to come to church, we have a responsibility. So thank you for taking time to blessing us with this recognition that this is a very important place. Blessing.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, I'm going to call Andrea Goldwin.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Chair Carol and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking for the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy has a long history with Holy Root Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz, and is pleased to support this designation. This church merits designation for its architectural significance and the role it's played in its Washington Heights community. The building was completed in 1916 in a robust Gothic Revival style, with towering pinnacles at the front facade and numerous pointed arch windows. The stone facade features extensive terracotta decorative elements and handsome stained glass windows. Overall, the building maintains its original appearance with only minor alterations, including a ramp at the entry. The church was constructed, as Washington Heights developed, in the early 20th century, following transportation improvements and population surges into this northern Manhattan neighborhood. As demographics evolved, the church has responded, becoming a center of the Latino community. It now offers services in English, Spanish, and American Sign Language. The Conservancy has worked with Holy Root many times. We provided financing for major roof and drainage system repairs in the early 2000s. The congregation retained the architect from that project to complete facade restoration, which received a Lucy Moses Award in 2006. Our Sacred Sites Program staff was instrumental in getting the church listed on the State and National Register last year. Recently, leaks have emerged at areas of the roof not part of that early 2000s project. Sacred Sites has awarded a grant for professional services to create, excuse me, create construction documents, and we hope to continue our relationship with the congregation. Holy Root is an architectural treasure and an anchor of this community. We thank the Commission for bringing this designation forward and urge a swift vote. Thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Okay, thank you very much. And next, we have Diego Raballo. Okay, I've got you in as a panelist.
Hello.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm Diego, from the Historic District Council. HTC thanks the Commission for considering this architecturally and culturally significant building, located in a neighborhood with a history that reflects the pattern of immigration to New York City, but which lacks sufficient landmark buildings to honor and acknowledge that history. Throughout its history, New York City has attracted immigrants fleeing adverse political and economic conditions. Only a few of the city's neighborhoods reflect this pattern of immigration to the extent of Washington Heights, a neighborhood that every few decades has received immigrants of diverse and varying ethnicities, backgrounds, and cultures. Since the beginning of the 20th century, Washington Heights has experienced dynamic demographic changes that mirror not only the socioeconomic context of New York City and the United States, but also globally. These changes have prompted individuals and families to seek safety and opportunity elsewhere. The cultural significance of the Holy Root Episcopal Church, Iglesias Santa Cruz, lies in this changing and enriching demographics. By serving and welcoming newcomers since it was established in 1893, the congregation has greatly contributed to New York City's multiculturalism. As noted by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation in a 2004 letter, Holy Root Church has faithfully served the changing populations of Fort Greene, and the history of Washington Heights gives us an idea of how diverse those populations have been. In the early 1900s, an increase, increasing housing development attracted Irish, Eastern European, and German immigrants. During World War II, many European Jewish people fleeing the Nazi regime settled in this neighborhood. In the 1980s, Russian Jews moved here to escape the anti-Semitic political climate. After World War II, Puerto Ricans, African-Americans, and Cubans fleeing Castro's regime migrated to Washington Heights. After the assassination of Dominican dictator Rafael Trujillo in 1961, Dominicans started to arrive in the neighborhood, and in the last decade of the 20th century, they became the predominant group. In addition to being embraced by a caring and compassionate congregation, immigrants have been welcomed by this outstanding structure built in 1915 by Bannister and Shell with well-executed Gothic Revival design elements, such as its decorative details, traditional arrangements of nave, and arc stained glass windows with geometric tracery, as well as other unaltered fissures that make this church architecturally significant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I see one hand raised. I'm going to allow you to talk. Did you want to testify on Holy Root Church? First name OP.
Hello?
Do you want to testify on Holy Root Church?
Hello?
Okay. Stay with me for a moment, Commissioners.
I don't under-
Okay. Okay. With that, I believe that's everybody who, that's everybody who signed up and wanted to testify on this item.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. And Rich, did we receive any additional written testimony?
Yes, we received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board 12 and strong support of designation.
Thank you very much. Okay. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right. Well, I think it was a, it was a fantastic presentation. Thank you, Kate. And it was wonderful to hear from Father Barrios this morning and to hear all of the support for this item. And I think that this item is architecturally significant, historically significant, fits wonderfully within our equity framework, and I look forward to bringing it back in the very near future for a vote. So we'll have a motion to close the hearing today, and then we will bring this item back for a vote. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you make the motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Great. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll bring that back very shortly for a vote. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item, Kate.
Okay, great. Item two this morning is LP 2650, the educational building, 75th Avenue, aka 2 to 6 West 13th Street, Manhattan, Block 576, Lot 36. Item proposed for a public hearing is the proposed designation of a 12-story Bozart-style loft building built circa 1914 that contained the National Office of the NAACP from 1914 to 1923, as well as many other progressive organizations. Oops, sorry, I was on the wrong slide there. The educational building, 75th Avenue, was constructed between 1912 and 1914. Commissioned by George Arthur Plimpton, a successful book publisher and philanthropist, this 12-story office and loft building housed the National Office of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, as well as a remarkable group of tenant organizations that shaped American thought and society, including several that remain active and influential today. On the southwest corner of West 13th Street in Greenwich Village, the educational building, 75th Avenue, occupies an L-shaped lot, as shown here. The NAACP is one of the oldest and largest civil rights organizations in the United States. Founded in New York City by mostly white reformers in 1919, it sought to fight racism through legal and educational means. The National Office was located at 75th Avenue for almost 10 years, from February 1914 to July 1923. This was an especially important chapter in the association's early development and history during the post-Reconstruction era, when racist Jim Crow laws and practices buttressed discrimination and segregation. The NAACP grew nationwide during this period and launched a series of effective campaigns against segregation, race discrimination, and mob violence, particularly the horrendous practice of lynching, which escalated following the revival of the Ku Klux Klan in the mid-1910s. The Director of Research and Publicity, the prominent African-American sociologist W. E. B. Du Bois, seen it right in his office at 75th Avenue, was a founder of the organization and editor of its influential journal, The Crisis. Du Bois founded The Crisis in 1910 and was editor until 1934. This popular and self-supporting magazine, which had a paid circulation of more than 100,000 by 1919 and continues to publish today, contained monthly columns and news reports about NAACP's activities, as well as contributions from noteworthy artists and writers associated with the Harlem Renaissance. In 1920 and 1921, Du Bois and Augustus Granville Dill operated an independent publishing company, Du Bois &amp; Dill, which published The Brownies Book, the first magazine specifically written for young African-American readers. Du Bois wanted them to be proud of their race and knowledgeable about their history and achievements. Published monthly, the pages were filled with positive imagery and stories by notable black authors. Langston Hughes, for instance, made his debut in The Brownies Book in 1921. In various issues of the magazine, he contributed a poem, a play, short story, and nonfiction pieces. One of the most important figures in the New York office was James Weldon Johnson. A former diplomat and skilled tactician, he organized the memorable silent march down 5th Avenue in 1917 to protest violence against black people in St. Louis and Memphis, and as Field Secretary, oversaw the establishment of hundreds of new local branches, including many in southern states. In 1920, he was appointed Executive Secretary, making him the first African-American to lead the NAACP. Under Johnson's leadership, the dire bill to make lynching a federal crime was passed by the U.S. House of Representatives in 1922, but was blocked by a filibuster in the Senate. Though nearly a century would pass before a similar law would finally win passage, the NAACP's campaign played an important role in confronting the issue and raising the association's national profile. The NAACP and The Crisis Magazine moved to 69 5th Avenue at the northeast corner of 14th Street in July 1923. That building, which has since been demolished, was the location of the NAACP office when it hung the now-famous banner, "A man was lynched yesterday," from a window in 1936, as part of the organization's continued campaign against the atrocity of lynching. 75th Avenue is visible in this photograph to the south, identified by the green arrow. In the years leading up to World War I, the educational building also attracted a great number of peace advocates. There were so many groups in- There were so many groups, in fact, that newspapers sometimes called it the Peace Building. Plimpton was a trustee in the World Peace Foundation and the Church Peace Union, now the Carnegie Council, which was active at Seventy-Fifth Avenue for several decades. He provided office space at no charge to the New York branch of the Women's Peace Party, which was founded in nineteen fifteen by the suffragists Jane Adams and Carrie Chapman Cat. Tenants with similar interests included the American Neutral Conference Committee, the League to Enforce Peace, the New York Peace Society, and the Emergency Peace Federation. The American Civil Liberties Union also traces its beginnings to the Educational Building. Initially called the National Civil Liberties Bureau, it was founded in New York City by the American Union Against Militarism, a pacifist group headed by Lilian Wald and Crystal Eastman to provide legal advice and representation to conscientious objectors following passage of the Selective Service Act in nineteen seventeen. Evicted following raids by the Justice Department in nineteen eighteen, it was soon relaunched as the ACLU. Today, this organization has offices in every state and more than a million members. Another notable tenant was the National Border Review, founded by the People's Institute in nineteen oh nine and originally called the National Board of Censorship. For several decades, all films that gained its approval were accompanied by a screen label passed by the National Border Review. Sweetie, sec. This organization also sponsored publications devoted to film criticism, such as the film program called Films and Reviews since nineteen fifty. This influential magazine remains in print and is the oldest periodical of its kind in the United States. Yeah, go get some gum. The Plimpton family sold Seventy-Fifth Avenue in nineteen forty-six. In subsequent years, it has had several owners, including the educational publisher Prentice Hall and real estate developer Jack Braus, who published this brochure. The building's architect was Charles A. Rich, formerly of the noted firm Lamb and Rich. An understated example of the Beaux-Arts style, the white brick and possibly cast stone elevations display a tripartite configuration consisting of a three-story base and eight-story midsection and a two-story crown. Most of the original neoclassical ornament is well-preserved, including the door surrounds, pilasters, composite capitals, reef panels, keystones, rounded pediments, and an extensive terracotta cornice. In reference to Plimpton's publishing company and the various educational tenants, the door surrounds that face West Thirteenth Street display cartouches that frame small images of open books, while some bays on the uppermost floors have iron grills with gilded book reliefs. The New School for Social Research acquired Seventy-Fifth Avenue in nineteen seventy-two. A significant institution with close associations to Greenwich Village, it was founded in nineteen nineteen as a progressive center for adult education and now incorporates five colleges. The building was renovated in two thousand five to six and is currently part of the Sheila C. Johnson Design Center at the Parson School of Design, the New School. Except for a new recessed entrance on West Thirteenth Street and modest alterations to the ground floor windows, there have been few changes to the exterior. The well-preserved Educational Building is historically significant as the former home of the National Office of the NAACP in the early twentieth century, as well as many impactful organizations that advance social justice and equality. A legacy carried on for almost fifty years by the New School. The Research Department strongly recommends designation as a New York City landmark.
Thank you, Kate. And Commissioners, are there any questions on this property before we move to our testimony? Yes, Commissioner Gustafson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious, considering the quality of the building and how well it's been maintained and how much original detail is still there, and its history, why has it taken so long for us to bring this up? Was there something else going on?
No, I mean, this is something that's been identified as part of work in this area, and it is a very standout building in the area with very important history. And so it's presented today for-
So, as you know, in the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work in this neighborhood and to date have designated eight buildings. As we continue to work equitably in other neighborhoods, we keep coming back here. And so this is just the next of several buildings that have very interesting history and are intact in this neighborhood.
Do we have a map? Do we have a map that shows the other designated buildings in this area?
Yes, I mean, our Discover New York City Landmarks map shows all of those, and if that would be helpful at our next presentation, I can include that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, we're not, oh, yes, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
You might not know the answer, but what floor the, what floor was the office on? Do you know? On what level?
We do know the answer, and if Matt Postal is here, who's been writing this report, he could tell us.
I am here, and it actually slips my mind, but I can tell you that originally, the NAACP and The Crisis were on different floors. I believe fifth and sixth, and then they moved, although I might have it in reverse, and then they moved to a single floor, which I believe was the eleventh. But again, I may be reversing them.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions? Okay, so why don't we move to public testimony? And if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance, and I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Kersavage to take us through the testimony. Okay, great, thank you, Sarah. And again, if you would like to speak, whether you've signed up or not, please do raise your hand. It's very helpful for me to call people. I'm going to start with Joe Goldberg. Okay, Joe, I've brought you in. And you just need to unmute yourself and shoot on your camera if you choose.
Sure. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, we can see and hear you, and if you could just please state your name for the record.
My name is Joe Goldberg, and I'm Assistant Vice President for Design and Construction at the New School. I just wanted to make a very brief statement that the New School is a proud owner of this building and will continue to take our, you know, full responsibility, our responsibility as caretakers of this physical structure, along with its legacy, extremely seriously. We are very proud of this building and are honored that it is selected as a landmark.
Great, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, and next, I'm going to call Charles Anderson, followed by Connor Allerton. Hey, Charles, I've got you in.
There we go. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you. My name is Charlie Anderson, and I am bringing testimony today on behalf of Assembly Member Deborah Glick. Our testimony is submitted jointly with State Senator Brad Whitman and Council Speaker Corey Johnson. And we represent the elected districts where this building is located and feel strongly that its architectural significance, cultural prominence, and political history warrant designation as an individual landmark. We feel that the purpose of landmark designation is to preserve the historic nature and sense of place that a structure or neighborhood provides. Seventy-Fifth Avenue is an excellent example of the intersection of historic significance and the overall sense of place represented in a single building. We ask that the Landmarks Preservation Commission move forward with designating this building and once again preserve history in Lower Manhattan. Greenwich Village is a community which has embraced political expression, the pursuit of social justice, and the organizational elements which ensure those goals are achieved. Seventy-Fifth Avenue is unique within our community in that it is almost entirely intact and structurally similar to its original nineteen twelve Beaux-Arts design. Seventy-Fifth Avenue also has an important cultural history as the original home of the NAACP. It also is the location of the Offices of The Crisis, the first U.S. black-oriented periodical, and W.B. Du Bois's publishing company, where he worked to produce literature for a black audience. Beyond these examples, the building has hosted a number of organizations, ones deemed radical or liberal, without which today we can hardly imagine a more just or progressive United States. The National Civil Liberties Bureau was founded in this building and eventually became what we know of as the American Civil Liberties Union. The building was also home to the American Federation of Teachers, the Citizens National Committee for Sacco and Vanzetti, and the League for the Abolition of Capital Punishment. It is remarkable to imagine that Americans who worked in this building contributed to the pursuit of civil rights, showed Americans the horror of lynching, developed a defense in the Scopes Monkey Trial, and worked to bring justice for Sacco and Vanzetti. We are proud to see a singular building in the communities we represent that has been part of the inspirational pursuit of democracy and justice that we cherish. The many historic elements of this building, architecturally, politically, or culturally, are truly astounding. We feel strongly that Seventy-Fifth Avenue is a prime example of why landmarking exists and why the preservation of historic structures and neighborhoods should be promoted in New York City. Lower Manhattan's history is foundational to understanding U.S. history. Awarding landmark designation to Seventy-Fifth Avenue will ensure that there is a physical space to give reference to the pursuit of social justice, equality, and cinematic culture in the twentieth century. We ask that the LPC move forward with designating this building as an individual landmark and solidify the historic record of the communities, of these communities, for the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'm going to bring in Connor Allerton. And while Connor's coming in, I just wanted to remind everybody, please do state your name for the record and keep your remarks to three minutes.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Good morning, my name is Connor Allerton. I'm a planner for Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, and I'm here to testify on her behalf. I thank Chair Carroll and the LPC Commissioners for this opportunity to testify in support of the landmark designation at Seventy-Fifth Avenue, also known as the Educational Building. The landmarking of this building marks an important step in the effort to preserve the area south of Union Square, a neighborhood of unique historical and architectural significance. Seventy-Fifth Avenue, a building constructed in nineteen twelve in the Beaux-Arts style, is the former headquarters of the NAACP, The Crisis Magazine, and an array of progressive and civil rights organizations. Critical early battles against racial discrimination in voting, housing, and employment were fought out of offices at Seventy-Fifth Avenue, while The Crisis provided a key literary voice for these efforts. Additional organizations that call the Educational Building home include the ACLU, the AFT, Students for a Democratic Society, the League for Industrial Democracy, the Women's Peace Party, the National Board of Review of Motion Pictures, and the Near East Foundation. Movements for Civil Rights, Women's Rights, Democracy, and important social struggles abroad all shared this site as a headquarters or major office through the twentieth century. The significance of the site is both national and international, and thus it should be preserved. I also urge you to expand your preservation efforts south of Union Square, as proposed by Village Preservation and many other advocates. This area has been home to countless artists, publishers, and organizers, and the preservation of Seventy-Fifth Avenue is emblematic of what should extend across such a historically significant part of Lower Manhattan. Therefore, I urge the designation of Seventy-Fifth Avenue as a landmark. Thank you for your time and consideration of this application.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Carter Booth, followed by Andrea Goldwin. Okay, actually, I'm not seeing Carter Booth. So I'm going to go to Andrea Goldwin.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking for the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to support designation of the Educational Building, Seventy-Fifth Avenue, as an individual landmark. The twelve-story tower features a brick-and-stone facade in a tripartite configuration. This is elevated with handsome ornamental details such as pilasters with composite capitals at the base, keystones at the windows facing Fifth Avenue, and a robust masonry cornice. Some of the details, such as small, open books and cartouches at the door surrounds, pay homage to the building's original owner, a publisher. There have been minor alterations, but the building is largely intact. The Educational Building was constructed in nineteen fourteen for a book publishing company which occupied the base, but it soon became much better known for the many social reform organizations housed in the upper floors. The most prominent was the NAACP, which had its national office there for a decade. Others included the American Union Against Militarism, a precursor to the ACLU, the New York Teachers Union, National Child Welfare Association, and many others. For nearly fifty years, it's been part of the New School for Social Research, continuing a legacy of progressive institutions. The Educational Building has a strong presence on this Fifth Avenue corner at the edge of Greenwich Village. As Commissioner Gustafson pointed out, many passersby might be surprised to learn that it's not already a designated landmark. We thank you for bringing this designation forward, and thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we'll have Andrew Berman. And just as Andrew's coming in, just to remind people, please state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes. Andrew, you just need to unmute yourself and shoot on your camera.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Andrew Berman, and Village Preservation strongly supports landmark designation of Seventy-Fifth Avenue, which is part of our proposed south-of-union-square Historic District and about which we have submitted voluminous documentation to the LPC regarding its significance to civil rights, social justice, and cultural history. The NAACP, the country's oldest and largest civil rights organization, waged some of its most important campaigns against lynching, voter disenfranchisement, housing and employment discrimination, and segregation from this address, as well as waging a very public campaign against the racist film The Birth of a Nation. This was a time of extraordinary growth and accomplishment for the young organization, instigating the first introduction of federal anti-lynching legislation, securing passage of its first statewide civil rights legislation in New York, holding some of the country's very first civil rights marches, and beginning its legal litigation practice, which ultimately helped lead to Brown versus Board of Education. By some accounts, they also first flew their "A Man Was Lynched Yesterday" flag at this location. The Crisis Magazine, the country's first black magazine and a crucial voice of the civil rights movement founded by W.E.B. Du Bois, was also headquartered here, giving voice to some of the greatest artists and writers of the Harlem Renaissance. Many of these would later become celebrated names but were early in their careers, including Langston Hughes, Zora Neale Hurston, and Countee Cullen. The Crisis argued not only for African-American civil rights but suffrage and equality for women, giving women prominent leadership roles in the magazine, including literary editor Jesse Redmond Fawcett. Du Bois and Dill's publishing house, also located here, published the first magazine for black children, as well as Elizabeth Ross Haynes' Unsung Heroes, saluting great African-American women and men of history. The building's grand Beaux-Arts architecture alone, virtually unchanged more than a century later, would make Seventy-Fifth Avenue worthy of landmark designation. The extraordinary civil rights history connected to the building, however, makes this a particularly relevant and necessary site to honor, recognize, and ensure its preservation. I would be remiss not to note that Seventy-Fifth Avenue is far from the only building of similar architectural merit and historic significance, particularly civil rights history, located within the proposed south-of-union-square Historic District, which the LPC has yet to consider. This area contains an extraordinary confluence of social justice history located within buildings of architectural distinction, many of which are endangered and unlikely to survive without action by the LPC. Today's hearing is an important step, but we hope not the only one, to protect this area's rich and endangered history and architecture. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, next we'll call Serbin Adlin. Next, we'll call Sarah Bean Atman.
Hello, Sarah Bean Atman, continuing the testimony of Village Preservation. Village Preservation has also submitted extensive documentation of the vast array of critical human rights, civil liberties, social justice, and progressive organizations and important publishers that were located at 75th Avenue. The building was home to an early incarnation of what would become the American Civil Liberties Union and the American Federation of Teachers, organizations which have urged the Commission to not only landmark this building but surrounding buildings in the proposed south-of-union-square Historic District, which share a similar history and significance. Also headquartered here was the League for Industrial Democracy, founded by Upton Sinclair, Clarence Darrow, and Jack London, and led by Norman Thomas. The League published The Socialist Review here, while its youth branch became Students for a Democratic Society, or SDS, the new left organization which so dramatically impacted political and social discourse in the United States in the 1960s. 75th Avenue was also headquarters of the Women's Peace Party of New York, headed by Crystal Eastman. This organization helped lead the formation of the National Women's Peace Party by Jane Adams, Carrie Chapman Cat, and Fanny Garrison Villard, which eventually became the American chapter of the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, with chapters in 37 countries as the oldest women's peace organization in the United States. The WPP helped shape the modern American peace movement, employing direct action rather than morgue-and-teal behind-the-scenes lobbying and attempts to influence public opinion. Also located here was Andrew Carnegie's Church Peace Union, which became the Carnegie Council for Ethics and International Affairs. The National Board of Review of Motion Pictures, which profoundly shaped the film industry in America, staving off direct government censorship while heavily influencing the content of motion pictures in this country for over a century, was also located here, as were prominent publishers WW Norton, Hawthorne Books, Prentice-Hall, and Gin &amp; Company, among others. 75th Avenue was also home to organizations which became the Near East Foundation, founded by Robert Morgenthau Jr. to prevent the Armenian genocide and other ethnic cleansing campaigns in the Ottoman Empire during and after World War I and provide relief to its victims. The significance of this and affiliated organizations located here in calling attention to what would be the first modern genocide and ethnic cleansing cannot be overstated and has been noted by scholars of 20th and 21st century global history. For these and many other reasons, we urge you to designate 75th Avenue and to consider designation of the remainder of the proposed south-of-union-square Historic District, which contains a multitude of buildings, stepped in the civil rights, civil human rights, social justice, publishing, and cultural history, which is so characteristic of this area. Thank you so much.
Lisa, you're on mute.
Thank you, Rich. I brought in Carter Booth, who will be followed by George Calderaro. Carter, we can see you.
Thanks. Good morning. My name is Carter Booth. I'm the Chair of Manhattan Community Board II. CBII did not have the opportunity to review this individual landmark proposal for the Educational Building at 75th Avenue, which, as your report notes and that you've heard today, has an extraordinary history as the former headquarters of the NAACP and many other civil rights, social justice, and other progressive organizations that have shaped American society. However, we strongly support the landmark designation of the entire Historic District south of Union Square, which has been proposed and presented by Village Preservation to CBII, and which this building is a part. We urge the Commission to move ahead, not only with the designation of this building at 75th Avenue, but also the remainder of the proposed Historic District, which includes many other buildings of similar architectural, historic, cultural, and social significance, particularly to the history of civil rights. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have George Calderaro. And I just want to remind people, please do raise your hand if you want to speak. I'm still working off of the sign-in sheet, but it helps if you raise your hand.
Hello, Commissioners. Good morning. I'm George Calderaro, testifying in support of the landmark designation of 75th Avenue on behalf of the Victorian Society of New York and the J. Rosamond Johnson Foundation, on whose boards of directors I serve. We support designation of this 1912 Bozart's building based on its architectural significance and its cultural significance as the former headquarters of the NAACP, The Crisis Magazine, and an incredible array of progressive and civil rights organizations. 75th Avenue was the early headquarters of the NAACP, the nation's oldest and largest African-American civil rights organization, as well as the country's first African-American magazine, The Crisis. The first black COO of the NAACP was James Weldon Johnson, who, with his brother J. Rosamond Johnson, whose legacy our foundation honors, wrote Lift Every Voice and Sing, which was designated the NAACP's official song in 1919 while at 75th Avenue. As you may know, Lift Every Voice and Sing is currently in the process of being designated the official national hymn by the US Congress. It should be noted that this legacy of African-American accomplishments continues at 75th Avenue in the main floor, Sheila C. Johnson Design Center at Parsons. As you may know, Ms. Johnson was the first African-American woman billionaire. We urge the Commission to move ahead with landmark designation of 75th Avenue, and also urge it not to leave behind the proposed Historic District south of Union Square, which also awaits action from the Commission. Evidence of the disturbing result of not protecting historic resources in the South Village can be seen two blocks away in the massive, inharmonious structure that has replaced the significant Sandini Hotel on 11th Street and Broadway. This glass-and-steel building is appropriate for an 80s-era suburban corporate park, not Greenwich Village. In any case, we urge you to move ahead with landmark designation of this building and the remainder of the proposed south-of-union-square Historic District. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have Simeon Bangkok. Okay, Simeon, I've brought you in. And Simeon will be followed by Melanie Edwards.
Hi, Lisa. Hold on a second. Let me just turn on my video. Come on, there we go. Good morning. I'm Simeon Bangkok, Executive Director of the Historic District Council. HTC is the citywide advocate for New York's historic buildings and neighborhoods. We've long been interested in the preservation of significant buildings and streetscapes in the area around and below Union Square. Historically part of the Ladies Mile neighborhood, this district contains an extraordinary inventory of buildings of architectural, cultural, and historic significance. In 2018, the LPC took the first steps in protecting some of the historic buildings in the area as individual landmarks. We supported the Commission's actions at that time, based not only on those buildings' handsome commercial character, but on the fascinating common themes of labor and social history, which the Commission's research had uncovered, connecting these buildings to the greater story of New York. Since then, additional research done by our colleagues at Village Preservation has revealed a remarkable tapestry of significance to a variety of cultural histories, including but not limited to the African-American LGBTQ civil rights movements, women's suffrage and women's rights, the labor movement, the New York School of Artists, and our city's profoundly important literary communities. This just skins the surface of the historic, cultural, and social significance of this area and these extant but threatened buildings. 75th Avenue is an example of this area's characteristic intersection of architectural excellence and cultural significance. Built 1914, designed by architect Charles Lamb, and what the LPC's materials rightly call "an understated and refined example of the Bozart style," this commercial building housed a remarkable roster of tenants involved with the furtherings of civic and human rights, no less a historic figure as than W.E.B. DuBois worked here decades before he lived in the landmarked Dunbar Apartments, 409 Edgcombe Avenue, or in the Aslee Park Historic District, all of which claim historic significance due in part to his association with them. In fact, this might be the earliest DuBois-associated site to be designated in New York City, and among the most significant in that represents his influential leadership of The Crisis, a magazine published by the NAACP. Both the magazine and organization were housed in this building, interestingly. By the time 75th Avenue opened, DuBois had been at the helm of The Crisis for at least four years, monumentally expanding its circulation and greatly expanding its content. There could have been no confusion from the building's owners about the type of organizations some of their new tenants were. The common conception of Greenwich Village in the beginning of the 20th century does not include a place for black activism, but it was there. As we strive towards a more inclusive world and expansive view of history as it really happened, designations like this help tell the full story of our city's history. HTC is grateful for the Commission's actions to preserve this building, but we feel that New York City's history would be better served by a broader designation which could better document and protect the multi-layered heritage of this distinctive area. This individual designation sparks the imagination by presenting the opportunity to encounter an actual site of social justice history. However, it was not built in open field. The people who worked there, the social activists, educators, and reformers who created the significance this designation honors, did not commute to an office in a vacuum. They were present in this neighborhood. Those who we were celebrating may have spent time in Union Square Park. They might have shopped in local stores and eaten in local restaurants. They doubtless interacted with the workers in the nearby daylight factories and their union representatives, who were headquartered nearby. While this is an important and very meritorious site, this designation feels like protecting a special tree while the rest of the forest is cleared. There is an exciting history of social and civic movements waiting to be uncovered in this area, and the actual sites where it happens still exist. Please protect them where they are raised, and the invisible history they embody is rendered immaterial as well.
Okay, thank you, Simeon. Melanie Edwards. And Melanie Edwards will be followed by Eve Khan. Okay. Just need to unmute yourself. There you go. Yes, we can hear you.
I'm not going to add to the eloquent description of the significance of the building. My interest in its preservation is personal. My grandfather is Rosamund Johnson, and his brother was James Weldon Johnson. He, of course, was good friends with Dr. DuBois, and our descendants are friends each with the other. The building is beautiful, and of course, that's important. It's heartening to know that the school is able to use the building without damaging its original architectural integrity. I just sincerely hope that, since history is not well-taught and not all fights are loud and obvious, that the preservation of this building will help Americans understand that battles are fought in a variety of ways. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Malani Edwards.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we have Eve Khan. I'm bringing you in now, to be followed by Amy Aronson.
Thank you so much. My name is Eve Khan. I am a board member of the Victorian Society's New York chapter, but I come to you today speaking on behalf of my friend Sarah Plimpton, who is a granddaughter of George Arthur Plimpton, just a granddaughter of Blanche Ames, the great suffrage activist. She has sent a letter in support of the landmarking of this building. She writes, "I just learned that my grandfather, George Arthur Plimpton, was responsible for building 75th Avenue for Gin &amp; Co., a publisher of educational books. It is a marvelous building, and when I read about all the organizations housed there, such as the NAACP, The Crisis Magazine, many other progressive organizations, I can't imagine this isn't an important building, and it should be landmarked. Besides those progressive organizations, it housed educational books. What could be more important? This building is a true history lesson, not only the architecture, but of its importance in civil rights, labor rights, and even world affairs. It was an education for me to read about 75th, and it should be saved for others to learn as I did. Respectfully, Sarah Plimpton." Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now we have Amy Aronson, to be followed by Catherine Schoonover.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. And please just state your name for the record.
Can you see me as well? Can you see me?
No, we can just see a picture of you. You just need to turn on your camera.
Yeah, I'm trying to... Oh, there it is. Okay, sorry about that. Hello. My name is Amy Aronson, and I'm a professor at Fordham University and Chair of the Department of Communication and Media Studies. As the author of the recent biography, Crystal Eastman: A Revolutionary Life, I express my strong support for the landmark designation of 75th Avenue, part of the south-of-union-square Historic District, proposed by Village Preservation. This 12-story Bozart-style office building holds extraordinary significance as a site of an absolutely staggering array of political organizing and social activism. I also want to express my support for the effort by Village Preservation to secure landmark status for Historic District designation for the surrounding area, south of Union Square, which includes 75th Avenue and contains so many other buildings of similar architectural, historical, and social significance. Notably, the Women's Peace Party of New York, founded by Crystal Eastman in 1914, was located at 75th Avenue. This was the first formal feminist peace organization in the United States, and it helped to launch a whole new peace movement across the world. Even after the national organization, the Women's Peace Party, was founded, the Women's Peace Party of New York remained the most trailblazing regional chapter of the national body. From its 75th Avenue offices, the WPP NYC operated a nationwide press service, organized innovative demonstrations, open-air meetings, and congressional hearings, and published its periodical, "The Four Lights." From its doorstep, Eastman led rallies drawing hundreds of people and called on the nation to claim its destiny as the prime mover of permanent international peace. As also has been noted, 75th Avenue was the home to the American Union Against Militarism, which coordinated with its existing headquarters in Washington to press for peace policies in the corridors of power while mobilizing public opinion through demonstrations in the streets. When the United States entered World War I in 1917, the national climate shifted dramatically when it came to protests for peace. With the mission of the AUAM under intense pressure, Eastman engineered a plan to form a separate legal bureau to protect democratic rights in wartime, free press, free speech, freedom of assembly, and liberty of conscience. The new bureau, operating out of the same building at 75th Avenue, became the American Civil Liberties Union. Without a doubt, the history of Crystal Eastman and these organizations is inextricably linked to 75th Avenue and the surrounding neighborhood, which throughout the 20th century fostered the growth of many civil rights and social justice organizations. I therefore strongly urge you to move ahead with the proposed designation of 75th Avenue and with the proposed Historic District, south of Union Square. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and next we have Catherine Schoonover, followed by Richard Fledget.
Okay. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, please. Yes, please just state your name for the record.
Good morning. Yes, I will. Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. My name is Catherine Schoonover, and I'm a longtime resident of the West Village. I'm here today to add my voice in support of the landmarking of 75th Avenue and the entire proposed south-of-union-square Historic District. 75th Avenue has an extraordinary history of association with a number of important organizations in African-American history, as the early headquarters of the NAACP during the time it was conducting its famous anti-lynching campaign, and the location of the offices of The Crisis Magazine, founded by W.E.B. DuBois, among others, which was an early publisher of writings by many notable figures of the Harlem Renaissance. Since we, as New Yorkers, are newly focusing on honoring our own African-American history, this building stands out as a central site to be preserved. Beyond that, 75th Avenue was a key location in the founding of an astonishing array of other important social justice organizations in our nation's history, including the American Civil Liberties Union, the American Federation of Teachers, and Students for a Democratic Society, just to name a few. 75th Avenue is a building with a history closely connected to many of the central cultural and social movements of the to many of the central cultural and social movements of the 20th century. I urge the commission to designate 75th Avenue as an individual landmark and also to move forward with the designation of the entire proposed south of Union Square Historic District, an area filled with buildings having histories where activism, combined with art and commerce, to transform our city and country in many ways that are as relevant today as ever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please do raise your hand. Next, we have Richard Blodgett. Followed by, and I apologize if I mispronounce, Soren Israelian.
No, you haven't, you can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
You pronounced my name correctly. Good morning, my name is Richard Blodgett. I'm a longtime resident of Greenwich Village. Thank you, Landmarks Commission, for all you have done to protect our beloved village with its many beautiful and historically significant buildings. I urge you to extend landmark protection to 75th Avenue. 75th is not only a rare Bozart's treasure, it is also very important historically. As others have noted, it was an early headquarters of the NAACP and has served many, many other civil rights and cultural organizations. On that basis alone, it deserves to be accorded landmark status. And just to give you a little reminder, as if you needed it, 75th is a key part of the proposed historic district, south of Union Square. Please act on the landmarking of the entire proposed district. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the final hand I see is Soren Israelian. Okay, Soren, I've got you.
Good morning, call. My name is, can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can hear and see. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Soren Israelian and I speak on behalf of the Armenian Bar Association, an association of legal scholars, judges, and attorneys throughout the United States, which has a strong presence and a chapter in New York, of which I currently serve as a vice chair. The 75th Avenue Building is a 12-story Bozart-style office building built from 1912 to 1914. A year later, in 1915, it housed the American Committee for Armenian and Syrian Relief, the second humanitarian organization chartered by the US Congress. The genesis of it was something horrendous that was unfolding across the globe in Ottoman Empire. The American Ambassador to Ottoman Turkish Empire, Henry Morgen Tausch Senior, sent telegraphs to US President Woodrow Wilson and the State Department warning that the Ottoman Turkish government embarked on a systematic and most brutal campaign to exterminate the Armenian race, as it was called at the time, and with it the Armenian culture that went back several thousand years. It is known today as the Armenian genocide. The Congress promptly convened and established the committee that was housed at the 75th Avenue Building. What happened in 1915 at this building played a role not only in the survival of the Armenian nation, but also in the shaping of the American moral leadership. From that building, the committee embarked on the largest humanitarian relief effort in the history up to that time. In five years' time, in today's dollars a month, the committee raised approximately $2 billion for its work. Importantly, there was no geopolitical or economic agenda to save the Armenian race. The driving force behind such immense effort was the moral call, the call that shaped the American consciousness at home and its role in the world as a champion of what is fair and what is just. In a books on diplomacy, it is known as the moral diplomacy and at times it's referred to as a Wilsonian diplomacy after US President Woodrow Wilson, a strong supporter of the committee. American diplomacy went from a moral diplomacy to a dollar diplomacy to a big-stick diplomacy and at the present is soul-searching. That building at 75th Avenue is a living reminder that the true and fundamental greatness of the United States is based on its moral foundation, upon which the economic, military, and other interests could thrive freely. For this or for many other reasons stated by the distinguished speakers before me, if I may conclude in a simple words, granting a landmark designation to this living memory, 75th Avenue, is the right thing to do. We also support the efforts of the Village Preservation to secure a historic district landmark designation for the surrounding area, south of Union Square, which includes 75th Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity and the privilege to address the commission.
Thank you very much. And that completes the sign-in sheet and also everybody that had their hand raised. And I don't see any additional hands being raised, yeah.
All right, thank you. And Rich, do we have any additional written testimony?
Yes, so we received over 80 letters in support of designation, including from some of the people we heard from today and addition to many other organizations and residents across the city.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you all for the support. Commissioners, any final questions for Kate before we close the hearing? All right, we're going to, I'm starting to unmute you all so we can close the hearing. So just look for that request. Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and, you know, this is another very exciting proposal for us. We, you know, have uncovered this history and we thank the Village Preservation for sharing history as well as the NAACP and other groups that have reached out to us and we are excited by the historical associations of the building and the history of progressive organizations that have been here and the legacy that continues today through the new school. We are delighted that the new school supports the designation and, of course, the building is architecturally significant as well. And this also fits within our equity framework and so we're very excited to be bringing it back. And so we will also bring this one back for a vote in the very near future. Thank you all. Okay, so now we'll move to the Preservation Public Meeting Agenda. Thank you, Kate and team.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, and I think we'll pause just for a brief moment to switch out the teams before beginning. Okay, I think we do have the architect and our staff is ready. So we'll begin the Preservation Department Agenda today with public meeting items. The first is item number one, LPC 21-03900, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 175, Lot 7504, 271 Church Street in the Tribeca East Historic District. This is an Art Deco-style office building designed by Cross &amp; Cross and built in 1930 to 31. The application is to modify a masonry opening, replace ground floor infill, and install signage. This was last presented at the public hearing of January 12, 2021, and no action was taken at that time. And the staff will be presenting the revised proposal this morning.
And we'll just be giving staff control of the presentation. And the staff may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners, Abby Harlbut, Preservation Staff. The application is for the installation of signage and the modification of an opening and the replacement of ground floor infill at 271 Church Street, located on the northeast corner of Franklin and Church Streets in the Tribeca East Historic District. So as Corey mentioned, the application was originally heard in January this year. At that hearing, the Commissioners present expressed a general consensus of support for the proposed signage as well as the location of the proposed modification of the window to a door at the south facade, as you can see here. Here are some historic photos. Here's a close-up of the opening that we're looking at here. So the commission expressed concerns regarding the removal of the entire bronze window assembly and requested that the applicant restudy the details, profiles and alignments of the proposed infill to better recall the historic framing. So here's an existing, sorry. And here's what they're currently proposing. So I'll take you through this quickly. Here's what was, what's existing. Here's what they had originally proposed. And here's what they're proposing now. So the applicants have addressed some of these concerns by retaining the upper portion of the bronze window assembly and proposing some larger millions to better align with the bronze above. As you can see here. So again, here's what exists. Here's what was previously shown to the Commissioners and here's what they're proposing now. As you can see, the remaining bronze and setting back the proposed infill here. Here are some details, whoops, sorry. The proposed details are shown in the places where it says "new proposal", you can see here. And again here, this is the proposed, this is the proposed. And finally, here are the, just as a reminder, the signage that they're proposing on rail with the pin-mounted signage is on the rail. And finally, some rendering. And if you have any questions, the applicant is going to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Abby or the applicant? As you may recall, last time, I think everybody was supportive of the idea of trying to modify the infill to allow for an entry here. And it was really a question about how much historic fabric you could retain and what those details would be. So the revised proposal keeps half of the infill, the upper half of the infill, and proposes the new door in the lower half, slightly reset. Any questions? All right, not seeing any questions. I think we'll just move to our discussion then. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to start this discussion?
Well, yes, thank you. I think the applicant has addressed most of our concerns. I think keeping the top, the transom, the two top transoms is the most appropriate thing that they could do. And having the offset occur at that, at the door level will help to minimize the fact that the millions don't really align perfectly. So I think that was a good, a good move. My only comment on it is that they're using a stock storefront profile, whereas the bronze has a little detail, sort of a little reveal. And I think you could probably get that, something like that replicated for the storefront and that would be, I think, an improvement on what they've shown here.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith and that the staff should work with the applicant on the profiles, but otherwise, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed.
Right, Commissioner Chen?
Likewise, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I agree.
Commissioner Letty?
I agree as well.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree.
And Commissioner Gustafson?
Appropriate.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron? Okay, all right, so I think we're all in agreement to move to approve this with the modification that they continue to work with the staff on the profiles of the new infill and the lower portion of the opening. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make the motion?
Yes. In the matter of LPC 21-03900, 271 Church Street in the Tribeca East Historic District, an Art Deco-style office building signed by Cross &amp; Cross and built in 1930, 1931, the application is to modify a masonry opening, replace ground floor infill, and install signage. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the installation of the proposed entrance infill will require the removal of only a portion of the granite bulkhead and bronze infill at one bay, limiting the removal of historic fabric. That the center location of the proposed entrance will harmonize with the symmetrical organization of the building. That the historic decorative grills and transoms will be retained and incorporated into the new infill design. That only the lower portion of the historic bronze window assembly will be removed and the new infill will be set back from the historic bronze transoms, thereby helping the new infill to remain a discreet presence and meet code requirements. That the proposed infill will be in keeping with the historic infill in terms of finish and configuration. That the proposed entrance infill will set back from the street and will provide direct access to the tenant's space without drawing undue attention to the installation. That the installation of signage will not obscure any significant architectural features of the building. That the proposed wall-mounted individual letters will be installed at plain masonry above the storefront on a metal rail and will be typical of signage at buildings of this type, style, and age in terms of placement and size and will feature a dark finish, which will be harmonious with the historic color palette of the building and other signage approved at the ground floor of this building. And that the overall amount of signage will not be excessive or detract from the architectural features of the building or streetscape. However, I find that the details of the proposed infill will not sufficiently match the historic bronze infill and I recommend that details be refined in consultation with staff to better match the details of the historic bronze millions.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letty?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public meeting item number two, LPC 21-05941, An Application for an Amendment. This is in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 544, Lot 20, 439 Lafayette Street in the NoHo Historic District, a Renaissance Revival-style warehouse building designed by D. &amp; J. Jardine and built in 1889 to 90. The application is to amend Certificate of Appropriateness 19-7981, approving a master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs. And the staff will be presenting this proposal as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marie Garino, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for 439 Lafayette Street in the NoHo Historic District. The building is located on the east side of the street between Astor Place and East Fourth Street. The proposal is to amend Certificate of Appropriateness 19-7981, which established a 10-year master plan for painted wall signs. This proposal is to modify that master plan by removing the content restrictions within the sign space. The master plan, as it was originally approved, places restrictions on this sign regarding the amount of space, the content, meaning the graphics and the words. The content of the sign can take up versus the background space as well as the number of colors that can be used depending on the content coverage. This application would be to remove all of those restrictions and to add a dimension of three inches to the border, which is in keeping with the recommendation made by staff in a presentation to you at a public hearing in March 2019. So here are some signs that have been installed under a master plan without any content restrictions at 155 Worcester Street as compared to signs that have been installed at this location, 439 Lafayette, with the content restrictions. And the applicant is here to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for either Marie or the applicant? All right, not seeing any questions. Rich, I believe we did receive some additional written comments on this proposal or something?
Yes.
Written comments on the proposal, yeah.
We did receive a resolution from Manhattan Community Board too, and they recommended approval of the amendment.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if there's no questions, we'll just move right ahead into our discussion. And as Marie said, this is an amendment to, as she presented, it's an amendment to a CMA that we've already issued for a master plan for signs to update the criteria to be consistent with the criteria we've approved. be consistent with the criteria we've approved more recently after we had a sort of policy shift on painted wall signs. So Commissioner Letty, would you like to start this one?
Sure, I mean, I think that this seems consistent with what we have approved, and I can support it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson?
I can support it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I agree.
Commissioner Shinder Baron?
I do as well.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree, appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
I agree.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Agreed.
Commissioner Bland, any thoughts?
Well, don't get me going. I'm less of a fan of wall signs than the rest of the Commission has been for 12 or 13 years I've been on the Commission. But I've long ago lost that battle and will certainly not oppose this now.
Okay, all right. But I think we have enough support to go ahead and approve this. So Commissioner Letty, would you make the motion?
In the matter of docket, LPC 21-05941, 439 Lafayette, NoHo Historic District, Renaissance Revival-style warehouse building designed by D&amp;J Jardine, 1889, the application is to amend the certificate of appropriateness 7981, approving the master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs. I note that the style scale materials and details of this building are among the features that contribute to the professional architectural and the store character of the NoHo Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the placement and size of the design will help it remain a subordinate presence at the building and within the street, regardless of the type of graphics or number of colors used within the body of the sign. The sign will include a three-inch solid painted border in either black or white to contrast with the content of the sign, a typical feature of historic wall signs, and that the revised scope of work is in keeping with the new tenants of the district.
All right, thank, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second the motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letty?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you. That's approved, and we'll move to the next item now.
Next item is public meeting item number three, LPC 21-04086. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness. It's in the borough of Manhattan, block 819, lot 39, 122 Fifth Avenue in the Ladies Mile Historic District, a Neo-Renaissance-style store and loft building designed by Robert Manick and built in 1899 to 1900. The application is to construct an addition on a vacant portion of the lot fronting West 17th Street and to establish a master plan for storefront and entrance infill replacement. This was last presented at the public hearing of January 19th, 2021. No action was taken at that time. Please note that at the public hearing, the Commissioners were supportive of the master plan for storefronts and entrance infill and were supportive of building on the open lot with a new addition or building, but asked the applicants to consider whether the design should relate to the historic building as an annex to it, or if it should have an independent design. Most Commissioners wanted to see the scale and configuration of the double-height base re-studied, as well as the marquee, and also requested that the proportions, profiles, and details of the facade elements continue to be refined. Additionally, a Commissioner asked that the details of the new infill at the projecting storefront base be more consistent with historic profiles. With that, the applicant, applicant team is here to respond to these comments with a revised proposal after we open the proceedings.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Letty, would you second that motion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the applicants may begin their presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Erin Ruley of Higgins Quaysbarthen Partners. We're pleased to be back with you today. Happy, happy spring. And to share with you the revised proposal for 122 Fifth. At the hearing, as Corey mentioned, in January, your comments focused on two, primarily on two aspects of the, the overall proposal. The design of the facade of the new building and the detailing of the interventions at the 17th and 18th Street projecting storefronts. So our presentation today focuses on those, those two areas. With regard to the facade design, your discussion centered on the nature of the proposal as an annex to 122 Fifth Avenue and how the design and details behaved, both in relation to the historic building, but also to the streetscape and district context. So we heard a variety of perspectives at that time, and we worked very closely with staff to, to respond to those comments. To be clear, this proposal is well and truly an annex to the historic building. The floor plates are continuous. It will house the new core for the entirety of the 122 Fifth Avenue building, and it will become the primary entry for, for the overall building. It should and does have a strong visual relationship to 122 Fifth Avenue. This is a fundamentally appropriate approach rooted in the district's history. And thanks to your discussion, I think these changes that we're sharing today really bring that, that idea into alignment. So next slide. Just to reorient us, we're looking at 122 Fifth, which is on the west side of Fifth Avenue between 17th and 18th Streets. It is a T-shaped building, so it has three street facades, but they're discontinuous. And, and then adjacent to that 17th Street wing is the, the parking lot where, which is the site of the new construction. Next slide. And again, just as a reminder of the overall scope of the project, three primary components, the lateral expansion on 17th Street at the parking lot that we see on the left, the rooftop addition, which is a one-story rooftop pavilion that's non-visible, and it includes a mechanical enclosure on the Fifth Avenue wing, again, non-visible, and the storefront master plan for Fifth Avenue, 17th Street, and 18th Street. And as a reminder, 17th Street and 18th Street have those remarkable projecting storefronts that have been altered over time, so there's a substantial restorative scope included there. Next slide. And so here we can see the revised design in the context of the previous proposal. So the, the current proposals on the right compared with the previous at the center. And so the primary changes address two fundamental needs. One, to strengthen that relationship with 122 Fifth Avenue, but also address the individual integrity of the, the new construction. And so this comparative view gives you a good sense of the overall impact of those changes. The significant horizontals have been carried through to the new construction, so we see sills and lintels aligned in the new design. And the string courses are carried across to the new building, and those have a more pronounced articulation. And all of this is in a somewhat modern vocabulary that you'll see in more detail as we, as we dig into the specifics of the design. At the base, the two-story expression has been reduced to a single-story entry infill and then a spandrel and pier configuration on the second floor. And the marquee has been reduced in width and has been made, the design has been revised to make it more rectilinear and consistent with what we see historically in those side street conditions throughout the district. And again, all in specifically addressing the Commissioners' comments at that time. As we move up into the, the shaft of the building, we see continuous piers extending through the shaft, recalling the monumental arches at 122 Fifth Avenue, but then also the, the intersection of the spandrels and the piers creating added depth, texture, and relief to the facade. And then finally, at the, at the crown of the building, the attic story is now clad in cast stone and with a far more robust cornice that really provides a proper termination to the building and giving it a sense of gravity and anchoring it into the, the streetscape. And overall, just really reinforcing that reading, that tripartite reading of the building, the base, shaft, and capital that we see throughout, throughout the district. Next slide. Here, just to remind you of the existing conditions, parking lot, void in the streetscape just off of Fifth Avenue, and we feel that the, the new addition, the new building really will act to stimulate this, this corner of the district. On the right, we can see the historic storefront, projecting storefront popping out in those views. The expansion of commercial buildings is a significant theme that we sort of, that we explored in the public hearing. And here we see those lateral expansions mapped out throughout the district. And so these are all examples of how buildings grew historically to accommodate growth or programmatic need. And these are a dozen or so examples that illustrate the variety of how these annexes or expansions were treated. Some were seamlessly integrated into the original, like number four, 141 Fifth Avenue. Some were more, had subtle design changes that reflect a shift in, or distinction in the program that we see at 880 Broadway, number eight. And some were designed to relate to the existing building but show the hand of a different architect, its time, and stylistic approach. And we see a handful of examples at number two, 37 West 22nd Street, and 33 East 12th Street, the, the example number three, which is the Stern Brothers Department Store on, on 23rd Street. But the cumulative effect in the streetscape is that you read this as continuity with subtle differentiation in the details. Next slide. And then just reflecting on three of those examples that I mentioned in the, the larger grouping, these are examples we looked at in the original hearing, 33 East 21st Street on the left, which is an, basically doubled the building. This is an addition designed by Daniel Burnham. And here you see alignments and, and general parti that is carried across for the extension, but really a differentiation in, in the detailing and, and ornamentation. At 141 Fifth Avenue, where the, the extension, so the original portion of the building is at the right, and then the extension is the corner piece and that side street elevation, but this is a seamless continuation of that original piece of the building and then creating the sprunus piece on, on the corner. And then finally, at 880 Broadway, which has at the left a nine-story freight and service extension. And here we see the, the awning for the, for the freight, freight entry extending at the base, and then really a, the horizontals continuing across, but then a modification in the fenestration pattern. But in all of these examples, we see strong visual cues that are connecting the, the original sections of the building to the original, and there's variation in the details of how they are treated. And so now, this is the, truly the context for our, for our proposal. And I'm going to ask David Burns of Studios Architecture to walk you through the specifics.
All right, so I'm going to walk you through kind of from the bottom up. I think Erin's hit on the big kind of points of the proposal. Overall kind of view of the project, and just thinking about the three parts of the building. We'll focus in on the base of the building. Again, the bay structure from 122 facade kind of coming through and informing the new facade. And then as we move up into the shaft, the idea that the shaft of the building also has a kind of dominant pier structure, where previously it was a kind of single plane with punched openings. And then a, and then a spandrel panel that is in a cast stone. So there's again a reference back to the 122 facade, and then we'll get to the, to the attic story. With that, just a reminder of the, the kind of T-shaped floor plan of the building, currently entering off of Fifth Avenue, has three independent frontages, and the existing parking lot is that space to the west on 17th Street. That is the lateral expansion that we're talking about today. So the primary facade really only on 17th Street, visible next to 122. This does house the new core for the building and will be the primary entrance for the From a materiality standpoint, it's not too different from what we proposed last time, although we have some, some variations, and I think addressing some of the comments about depth, especially in the, in the shaft of the building. But for the most part, we are bringing across tones and materiality from 122 to show that this is kind of a holistic project and a lateral expansion that relates back to the original building. So at the base, we are looking at a cast stone to match the rusticated limestone base. You'll see that in the kind of cornice lines lower in the building, and then the metal finishes also matching the metal finishes of the existing 122 building. As we move up into the shaft, the brick remains as a, as part of the kind of composition of the street wall and the fact that there is brick on the 122 facade. The piers become more dominant. We do have a stepping in profile, and then at the spandrel panel, there is a cast stone, spandrel panel that also then picks up again on the patterning of the existing spandrel panel. We'll get into each one in a little bit more detail. The cast stone reappears at the top of the building to relate back to 122 with the metal So at the base, we'll show one more comparison of existing previous design and current, showing that two-story base in the middle with the floating marquee, bringing the kind of pier structure back and increasing the amount of cast stone. You also see the deliberate kind of alignment at the cornice lines and window heads and sills. So we're really pulling all of those lines across from the existing building. We're reducing the marquee, kind of squaring it off, making it slightly more utilitarian in nature and more fitting with other marquees in the district. The structure then transforms to, from stone, cast stone, to metal below, and then you see the metal spandrels, which is also something that's happening similarly in the 122 facade to the east of the bay projection that you see in the view on the right. So with that, a kind of elevational view, you see that kind of three-bay structure in lieu of the one kind of heroic bay that we had previously. The marquee has been pulled in slightly on either side. We have the transformation from stone to metal as it comes through the marquee. You see the kind of two-story expression of spandrel to windows as you have in the, in the 122 building. And from here, we'll move into a little bit more about the, the marquee itself. There is a slight error graphically here that kind of wrongly illustrates the curb and, and section. The marquee projection is shown in the detail, so we are pulled back from our property line just over three feet. And the projection beyond the property line is at, is at 10 feet. This is the section looking back toward Fifth Avenue. You see the projection of the bay window beyond on the left-hand side. This is a more accurate representation, representing the curb line, showing a cut through the marquee. The metal that happens below the storefront at the base is pulled in, a total of around three feet. The stone, cast stone returns at the corners and then pulls in to reveal more expressive metalwork at the glazing under the marquee. You also see the spandrel panels on the second floor slab in metal, again, similar to what you have at the existing 122 building. And then that first kind of cornice line aligning with the third floor slab that we'll get into in a little bit more detail next. So that third floor condition, again, the, the importance of the horizontals, bringing those alignments to the outermost point of the existing cornice lines in 122, but then a reinterpretation and a simplification of the cornice profile itself. So in detail, you'll see those two conditions, both at the detail six, at the, roughly the fourth floor slab, detail five at the lower third floor slab, those outer points of that projection aligning with the existing 122. The profile kind of smoothed and simplified to create that horizontal expression. From there, we'll move up to the shaft of the building where you see the brick piers landing on this cornice line, and you'll see that first kind of spandrel condition So in the shaft, we are expressing those, those columns, the vertical piers, similar to 122, and placing an emphasis there, pulling the, the spandrel panels back, changing the materiality of the spandrel panel, but also offering a bit of a profile, since there is a, a number of kind of detail lines and breaks in the existing. Again, simplifying that, providing a similar profile and detail, kind of smooth edge and modern interpretation into the spandrel panel. So the detail on the far right through the spandrel panel with the lower So the detail on the far right through the spandrel panel with the lower, uh, register and an upper register, which aligns similarly with the breaks, the overall hierarchy of the spandrel panel in one twenty-two. And then in section, uh, in plan, in plan profile, the detail of the brick stepping back at the piers at the perimeter. And then the center piers as well, uh, pulling the glass about twelve inches back from the face of brick. And the top of the building, uh, we see again that alignment with the cornice line of the bottom of the attic story. The change of material here from brick to cast stone to again, reference back to one twenty-two. Uh, the transitions from, from brick, uh, at the top of the building. And then terminating the building in a larger, more dominant cornice. Uh, again, we've tried to pick up on key points in the existing cornice adjacent, uh, to pick some alignments. We can't fully, uh, create the exact same height, given our, our, our zoning kind of limitations on overall building height. Uh, but this allows us to get, uh, what we feel like is a, um, a reasonable kind of cap and, and, and a termination to the building with enough weight that it feels appropriate. Similar profiles in the cornice lines, and then you'll see again in the easing of edges as we create the metal cornice at the top of the building. And a section through that shows the overall depth of the marquee itself. And then the detail to the right is that sill condition, uh, at the attic story just below the tenth floor windows. So with that, I'm going to jump quickly into the storefront. And as it was mentioned, there were kind of some, some minor, uh, comments on the storefront, in particular, the bay window projection. So I'm going to jump to the Seventeenth Street side, uh, in particular, the door integration into that, uh, that side of the building. The historic timeline we've, we've gone through before of, you know, as built and drawn as a storefront with no openings. In nineteen oh eight, uh, documentation that, that supports the idea that there are openings, were openings added. And then later in, in nineteen twenty-one, it looks like it had been restored to just a storefront to the current condition today. Uh, used for ancillary mechanical equipment and has been kind of covered up and, and in various states of kind of, uh, repair. The real discussion today is that corner condition of how to return a door inside of the bay. That was the primary question. And I'll go through some existing and proposed details of that condition. These are examples within the district of that kind of return, uh, for a door insertion into a bay. As a reminder, some of the detailed photos, and again, uh, the, the two sides of the building are very similar. There is restorative work throughout wherever material is salvageable and usable, it will be restored. And the overall proposal for the elevation existing and proposed, nothing here is changed, except once we get to the outside corner of the recess for our new doors. Uh, the only other comment is the door, uh, that was previously marked as fixed. We are looking to create that as an operable door. So that is the door to the right. So I will show that in plan as well. So our previous submission had the new door to match existing historic as a fixed condition because of some of the conditions inside of the building. We do believe we'll be able to make this operable. So design-wise from the outside, nothing will change, except this would be an operating door. And then the condition we're going to zoom into is the detail one. So the primary concern was that, that heft of the outside corner and how to do that with a modern storefront system, but still tie it to the historic detailing. So on top, we have the previously proposed, which was a outside corner post, uh, aluminum extrusion, and we were pushing the, the decorative caps to the very corner. The width of the decorative caps is two and three-quarter inches on the, uh, individual mullions. You see that on the bottom right as it rounds the corner, that radius hits our first mullion. The expressed kind of metal there that has a pattern on it is two and three-quarters. And so the goal was to reduce the overall, uh, size of that corner condition, uh, and allow for it to read more in unison with the two and three-quarter typical mullion condition. So the proposed is a kind of, uh, forty-five degree angle mullion that minimizes the amount of metal directly behind the glass. Uh, reducing it down to two and three-quarters at, at the corner. So we have the exact same visual expression, uh, from the, uh, from the outside and elevation. And then we have a cap that returns on the opposite side with a one-inch radius cove that would connect the two at the corner. So the expression on either cor, on either side of that corner would be two and three-quarters, which would match exactly the existing condition. Uh, these details really haven't changed. It's really the, the elevation, as you look through this section back toward that outside corner, you see that two and three-quarter profile that is matching the historic and the one-inch cove, uh, that connects it to the south-facing, uh, cap as well. And in view, really honing in on these two corners, the details in question, and this door now becoming operable. And that's it. That's the overview.
Okay, thank you. And, um, commissioners, do we have any questions? All right. I don't think we have any questions. And Rich, I don't believe we received any additional written comments on the revised proposal. Is that correct?
Correct.
All righty. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to move to our discussion now. Since we don't seem to have other questions, so I'm starting to unmute or request to unmute all of you. Take a look at that. Um, and as, uh, was presented today, this application, um, was, when originally presented, was largely supported, but there were comments about the details of the projecting storefront entry, but also, on the design of the annex and whether it should be designed as an independent building or an annex. But in either case, that the details be refined to give the design its sort of its own internal integrity. And, um, so the applicants have presented many details today and will begin our discussion. Commissioner Bland, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um, let me start by saying it was very useful, as always, to have Aaron give us a little history lesson on how additions, uh, have been made, particularly in this district, which I think, um, are, um, maybe more consistently, um, buildings were more consistently added on to here than in many other, um, historic districts. So that was useful to see and be reminded about, uh, and the variety of them. Uh, some quite different from their original building, um, and some almost, uh, without, uh, uh, blinking of an eye of, of, of a change at all. At first, uh, when I saw this, I thought, well, the milk has been pasteurized, it's been homogenized, and it's just going to be, you know, the same as the existing building. But I think the architect's description and the details shown are, are quite, um, it's kind of a both and. Blinking one's eye, you would say, well, this is, everything's copacetic. And it is copacetic, uh, but I think the details are inventive and appropriate. The alignments make sense. I don't think I was so opposed to the double height entry before. This is the entry to the building, uh, but, uh, the, the cues that were given off by our comments, I think, suggested what the architect has now come up with. So I'm in, uh, full agreement that this is a, an appropriate and, um, good addition. And I think once, uh, people unblink, unfrost their eyes, whatever the term would be, uh, they're going to enjoy the details uh, and exploring how, um, a hundred years later, this building was added on to.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi.
Um, I, I happen to, um, agree. Uh, I, I feel like, um, this building works both as now as a standalone, but, but also can, as an integrated part of the building next to it, and it fits very nicely within, um, the road that it's on. I, I think that, um, the articulation, uh, around the windows, um, and is quite nice. I, I like the fact that it looks like it, it truly relates to the next building next to it, but it feels like it can stand alone.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
I, I want to commend the architect because the detailing are so carefully thought through. And, and they're really quite refined, I thought. The original building is, is, is a handsome building, and the new one refers to the original. And both of them make a handsome composition. I had a bit of concern about the thinness of the mullions of the new building, but it, no matter. I think the, um, I can approve this project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
Yep. Uh, I, I, I don't think I had as, uh, as many issues with the original proposal as, as others. Um, and this is fine. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yes, thanks. Um, I think my concern had to do with the elevation that we're looking at right now. Um, with the, this kind of extra-large storefront. And I think that what they've done now is return the kind of three-bay system into a kind of more legible experience on the street. And I think that's very successful. So I, I think it's appropriate and I'm, I'm glad that they've made these revisions.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Yeah, I'd like to commend the applicant for, um,
I lost my sound.
We didn't.
Oh, I'd like to commend the applicant for listening to our comments. And I think that the result is a much improved, uh, building, which has a lot of really nice detail. And, um, really looking forward to seeing these curved profiles, which I think are intriguing. I'm very glad to see that they were able to incorporate a smaller mullion at the outside corner of the old bay window to help reduce that clunkiness. That was a concern that I had last time. And I think this is a very successful application.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Uh, yes, I, I agree. I think this is, uh, improved and, uh, very approvable as presented now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree. I think it, I think it has improved and I think it is appropriate. I'm, I'm, I, I started out like Fred did with a, um, concern that it had been homogenized a, a bit and, remained, uh, rather, uh, meek. And I, I, I think that the application is appropriate, uh, but I, I do think that the details don't necessarily bring this up to the level of something where there's a real dialogue between the old and the new, but it's really more of a kind of washed out version of it. It's certainly, it's certainly got enough detail and care to be appropriate, and I, I don't oppose it. But it kind of just strikes me like, these architects, they do kind of really nice stuff. Are they afraid of working in a landmark district? It looks like they've been kind of like cowed into taking their creativity and beating it down into the size of a little detail. And, you know, it's great, but I got, I, I feel bad. I wish that they felt more emboldened to do something more, uh, uh, I don't know. Creative. It, I, I worry, but, uh, it's, it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one thing, one thing that's definitely, I definitely would ask them to look at with staff. Those, those, the call, the tripartite base is, is much more successful. But the fact that, that the canopy kind of kneecaps the two columns in the center is something that we've seen a lot on buildings that have been modified over the years. It is, it is a, I, I find it to be a, 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 a detail that looks peculiar to me, and I would ask them to look at that with staff.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
I agree with the comments compared to the previous version, uh, this is much improved and is appropriate.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I think we're, uh, consensus here to approve. So, um, Commissioner Chapin, would you read the motion?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the matter of, uh, certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, LPC twenty-one zero four, uh, zero eight-six, one twenty-two Fifth Avenue, Ladies Mile Historic District. Uh, Neo-Renaissance style store and loft building designed by Robert Menneke, Menneke, and built in eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen hundred. Application is to construct an addition on a vacant portion of a lot fronting West Seventeenth Street and to establish a master plan for storefront and entrance replacement. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are my features that contribute to the special historic and architectural characteristics of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features. That the construction of the addition fronting West, uh, Seventeenth Street will support the continuity of the street wall, a character-defining feature of this historic district. That the addition will be consistent with the existing building and neighboring buildings in terms of its height, alignment of floor levels and materials and finished palettes. Thereby, uh, helping the addition to remain a harmonious presence within the streetscape. That the addition will be in keeping with historic annexes found at some commercial buildings within the historic district in terms of placement, portions and separate street facade designs, establishing an independent identity for the addition. That the street facade will feature a solid-to-void relationship at the upper floors, window proportions and a vocabulary base, shaft and capital, which will be in keeping with aspects of early twentieth century loft buildings. That the design of the street facade will feature variations in depth and a level of articulation, which will closely recall aspects of historic masonry buildings found within the historic district. With the angled profiles of masonry, when combined with their simple detailing, will reflect the mundanity of the design without drawing undue attention to this aspect. That the proposed marquee will be simply designed in keeping with marquees historically found in some service entrances at large commercial buildings within this historic district in terms of placement, size, materials and finish. With the north facade of the addition visible through the alley will be typical of secondary facades of commercial buildings throughout this historic district in terms of materials, finish and simple design. With the two flagpoles of the fifth, uh, facade will be installed with three, will be in keeping with historic flagpoles, sometimes found at buildings of this type in terms of their size and placement, and will remain a subordinate and present at this large facade. That the establishment of a storefront master plan will provide for a unified pattern of ground floor infill over time. That the historic main building entrance has been altered over time and features prominent masonry framing elements. Therefore, the installation of modern storefront infill, featuring entrance doors set back from the columns, will not alter an intact historic composition or diminish the identity of the bay as a primary entrance. That the proposed infill of the Fifth Avenue facade will be simply designed and keeping with ground floor infill at commercial buildings of this age throughout the avenue and within the historic district in terms of the composition of elements and the amount of placing. That the proposed entrances at the projecting historic bays would, will be well scaled to the bales, bays and placed at a distance from the curved corners, thereby helping them remain a harmonious and subordinate presence. That all of the proposed infill at the storefronts will be simply designed and typical in terms of materials and finishes. That the signage letters will be typical in placement, material and finish, and will be well scaled to the storefronts. And that the cumulative effect of the mountain size of the signage will not overwhelm the storefronts or building.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. And we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Okay, and, uh, this is also the final public meeting item, uh, item number four, LPC twenty-one dash zero zero nine six one. An application for an amendment. This is in the Borough of Brooklyn, block forty, lot one, sixty-eight J Street in the Dumbo Historic District. This is a complex of warehouse and factory structures designed in the American round arch, round arch style with queen and elements. And the arch, round arch style with queen Anne elements and the daylight factory style with transitional American round arch elements, designed by William Higginson and built in phases between eighteen ninety-six and nineteen fifteen. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness sixteen dash seventy-five thirty, approving a master plan governing the future installation of storefront infill, signage and loading docks. And the staff will be, uh, presenting this proposal today.
Good morning, Commissioners Abby Harlback, Preservation Staff. This application is to amend a certificate of appropriateness issued on February second, approving the establishment of a master plan governing the future installation of ground floor infill, signage, loading docks, ramps and railings throughout the base. So, the building at sixty-eight J Street occupies the entire block bounded on the east by J Street, south by Front Street, west by Pearl Street and the north by Water Street in the Dumbo Historic District. And the building was constructed in, um, in, in roughly four different stages, from eighteen ninety-six to nineteen fifteen by the same architecture firm in the same style for the Grand Union T Company. So these phases of construction are recalled by the approved colors of the ground floor infill approved under the master plan that was established in two thousand and fifteen, which is why you see a couple of different colors noted here, um, on the, showing the building. So at that time, the master plan only covered select ground floor infill that had already featured storefront infill. So the application before you today is to amend the approval to include all of the bays at the ground floor in the master plan. So the proposed infill will match the approved infill in terms of material details and finish as noted, um, in its, um, development throughout time. So the current conditions, as you'll see, and it's a large building, so we'll go through this, um, quickly but hopefully thoroughly, um, the current conditions at the ground floor that are not currently part of the master plan consist of a variety of, of double hung windows, whoops, excuse me, um, as you can see here, single light fixed windows, uh, brick infill and utilitarian doors. So the proposal is to install one-over-one double hung windows and doors and transoms within select existing openings and to modify select openings to feature storefront infill. And at one location on J Street, as you can see here, they are proposing to, uh, install a pair of one-over-one windows similar to what exists also here on the street. So like I said, I'll take you briefly through this and the, the presentation is set up so that you can see, um, what was approved at, um, the original hearing and the bays that are, are now being included in the proposed master plan and they're numbered as such. So this is J Street and this is the, the latter portion of the development of the building. And then this is the other half of J Street here and you can see the proposal as we go along. This is one of those, um, modifications of, into storefront infill. And then here is Water Street, existing and proposed. And I'm going to take you through these really, really briefly and then we'll zoom in on some of the bays that are, that are being, um, included in the master plan under this amendment. So here we are in Front Street. And here's, um, some of the close-ups. So this is J Street, some of the, the changes, um, the proposed, uh, here's one-over-one windows and this is what they're proposing. Um, here's an example of one of those, um, utilitarian doors to match what has been approved previously. Um, and then this is Water Street. And this is an example of one of those, um, sort of masonry infill that's being restored. Um, again, masonry infill and utilitarian doors, um, also on Water Street. This is Pearl Street. This is also Pearl Street, some of the changes and some of the proposed, um, loading docks that will match what was approved previously, um, so that this can be accessed. And then finally, here's Front Street. You can kind of see what's going on here. Um, again, here are the details, um, some of the, the changes again is the, the one-over-one window being included in what was approved, but you can see that the, the details are proposed to be the, the same as what has been approved. And then of course, what has been approved for the, for the loading docks and ramps and such. So if you have any questions, the applicant is here to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Commissioners, do we have any questions for either Abby or the applicant? All right, I don't think we have any questions. And, um, as of yesterday, we hadn't received any, uh, comments on this proposed amendment. And Rich, that's still the case, correct?
Yes, that's still the case.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Abby, for a detailed presentation. I think, um, it's part of the reason we don't have any questions. So I think we'll move right to our discussion and I'm starting to request to unmute you. So look for that. And, um, as Abby said, this is a full block, um, complex of buildings that have, were constructed in phases over time and that has resulted in slightly different configurations at the ground floor. And the commission previously approved a master plan for storefront infill, um, but it was only at select bays. And so now the request for this amendment is to continue the master plan to allow them to have more administrative review of their, um, changes at the ground floor in the future. And they're proposing to remove either, um, existing one-over-one windows, simple doors or brick masonry infill and replace them with either matching one-over-one but with different details, um, doors that match the storefront doors or, um, new storefront infill. And in, I think, two cases, it involves, uh, modifying masonry openings to create a single opening. So let's go ahead and start our discussion. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Yes, thanks. Um, I, it seems to me that this is a very reasonable thing to do. I mean, it could have gone a variety of ways, but I think that, um, the master plan makes sense. I mean, I think that we could have, it may have been too much work, but approved along the way, various kinds of, um, of changes to the building because it's, because it was, um, because the, the changes to it have occurred over time and additions have happened. Um, so it didn't, in my mind, it, I don't know that it absolutely needed a master plan, but I think that, um, that the master plan doesn't detract from the variety and variation, um, or the historical reading of that kind of accumulation over time. So I think that this, uh, this makes sense and, um, and I consider it appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. I think, um, what they, they're showing is, is all appropriate changes to the windows and will allow them for, allow them to, you know, revise spaces as, as time passes. And I, I think it's acceptable as is.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I, I agree with the remarks of previous commissioners. I think, uh, this is appropriate and it, I think it's quite successful as a, uh, master plan for the storefront. So I can approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree.
Commissioner Chen?
I agree. I just have a question out of curiosity. Historically, uh, we normally do master plan for upper floor windows. When is the threshold for the ground floor storefronts?
So we, we actually have done numerous storefront master plans and, uh, really the master plan is a tool that then allows the applicant, the building owner, to make changes over time with a more kind of streamlined review because they get the prototypes approved at once. So it's really, uh, primarily an administrative tool for permit processing. Um, and so, um, in, in many cases, those applications come to the commission. Sometimes they meet the staff level rules and can be approved at staff level, but it essentially proves a prototype. And so in buildings with multiple storefronts where there are multiple bays, the commission has often approved master plans to allow for kind of a menu of options within those storefront openings. And in this case, I think, you know, because the building was built in phases and there are different kinds of openings at the ground floor, the master plan also sort of reflects that variety as well as proposed. I don't know if that answered your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, as Abby said, I think, uh, reasonable, but in our case, appropriate as well. So I think it's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
Uh, I do as well. I think it's very appropriate. They've done a good job and I'm a big advocate of, uh, master plans at the retail level, just because it gives the, uh, building owners a really good roadmap for going forward and it, it actually enables, um, them to have like, uh, to update their windows in a way that's consistent with the, uh, context in the-
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
The aim is to restore the historic appearance of the base, so therefore I approve it.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, appropriate as is.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you read this motion?
Sure. In the matter of LPC two-one zero zero nine six one, sixty-eight J Street, the Dumbo Historic District, a complex of warehouse and factory structures designed in the American round arch style with queen Anne elements in the daylight factory style with traditional transitional American round arch element designed by William Higginson and built in phases from eighteen ninety-six to nineteen fifteen. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness sixteen seven five three zero, approving a master plan governing the future installation of storefront infill, signage and loading docks. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Dumbo Historic District and I recommend approval, finding that the enlargement of select masonry openings will restore these openings to their historic lintel heights, thereby helping to return the base closer to its historic appearance. That the one-over-one double hung windows will match the approved storefront infill on the base of the building in terms of details, materials and finish and will be in keeping with windows found at buildings of this type and age in terms of configuration and operation. That the additional concrete and loading docks and ramps at Water and Pearl Streets will match the approved loading docks and ramps and associated railings in terms of materials, finish and finishes and will not overwhelm the industrial building, which historically featured loading docks throughout the base of the building. And that the expansion of the master plan to all bays will unify the base of the building over time.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Excuse me, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much. So that concludes our public meeting agenda and we will now begin the public hearing agenda for new applications for work on designated property. So Corey, will you take us to the next item?
Sure. The first is item number one, LPC twenty dash zero four five zero four, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block sixteen sixty-six, lot forty-seven, two seventy-four, Malcolm X Boulevard, I've heard Stuyvesant, expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. This is a store and flats building built circa eighteen seventy-nine. The application is to modify the front facade, install storefront infill, modify windows at the rear facade, install a fire escape and rooftop mechanical equipment.
And Commissioners, the applicant and staff have joined, um, the hearing. Um, please note that staff will be, uh, walking through, uh, initial components of the application and then the applicants are available for questions. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners Elizabeth Fagan, Preservation Staff. Uh, this item is located on the west side of Malcolm X Boulevard in between Macon and Halsey Streets. Please note that the advertisement of this item included rooftop mechanical equipment, uh, which now qualifies for staff level review and the replacement of the fire escape, which will now remain in place. Uh, this building was constructed circa eighteen seventy-nine as a three-story wood frame store and flats building, which you can see here in the nineteen forties tax photo. Uh, note the gap between the facade and the adjacent building on the left side of this photo. Uh, by the nineteen eighties tax photo, the building still retained much of its historic form, including its window openings and cornice. Uh, and here are some street views showing the context of the existing building, which is here, uh, on the left-hand side, um, as well as this is from Macon Street. The building is located behind that tree. And here's the current condition of the building here on the left. The facade consists of cement block with some brick infill at the ground floor around an underlying steel lintel and columns. Uh, later on in the presentation, you'll see images of the existing wall conditions taken from the interior of the building. And according to DOB records, uh, the building was altered sometime in the nineteen eighties, including replacing exterior walls. Um, and you can see the facade was widened at that point as well. Uh, the facade has remained unchanged since the historic was, historic district was designated in twenty thirteen. Uh, and here you can see some images from Macon Street around the corner where the side and rear of the building is visible through the adjacent yard. Uh, these wall sections are also made of cement block. Uh, and now I'm going to pass it on to the architect, Peter Barnes, to walk you through the rest of the presentation. Um, so Peter, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and continue on. Peter, if you're, if you're there, um- I'm here. Yes, you can hear me now. Yeah. Yeah, good morning. I'm Peter Barnes. I'm the architect for this, um, building, two seven four Malcolm X Boulevard. Okay, okay. You can all hear me, I suppose. Yeah, okay.
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Yeah. The basic intent of, um, this renovation, reconstruction of this building is to, um, basically the front facade and the rear facade and a storefront construction, new storefront construction of the first floor. The basic intent is to bring this building back into some continuity with the landmarks district. If you notice, let's take, um, the front facade and Malcolm X Boulevard. Currently, um, it's a masonry front with some brick and concrete block infill. What we've, what we've proposed to do here is to, um, construct new windows, new storefront and, um, entrance to the upper floors where there are apartments. As you see, these are the existing conditions as is. We've not changed the height of the building. All that has been altered and if it was done previously to us getting involved, is the width of the building, that infill of that, um, I think about three or four feet adjacent to the, um, adjacent to the, the store. As you see inside, it's all concrete block. Outside, we did some probes and you can see the basic condition that we have a full masonry, um, building there. Uh, next slide, please. Front facade, brick with, um, a lintel and steel column at the first floor. But this is the proposed, this is our proposed plan. Uh, we've, um, renovated, or this is a proposed renovation where the upper floors are apartments. And, uh, the lower floor would be, um, the commercial entity. This is our section showing basically no change insofar as height. The only change at the facade is that the cornice has been reconstructed, keeping the same height of the existing building. Next slide. This is basically what we're proposing insofar as, um, the storefront at Macon. Where we've done, we've done, let's start the cornice at, at, um, the top of the building. What we've done, we've kept the building at same height and we have not tried to, uh, realize, to align it with the adjacent buildings. Did, um, the building to the left is a three-story building, which is- The building to the left is a three-story building, which is probably about two feet higher than our building. And we've not tried to align it. The building to the right is a four or five-story building, probably about eight or nine feet higher. So realigning it would not be a good idea, so to speak. And so what we've done, we've new fiberglass corners that we've done here, windows. We've done four windows to equalize the, the, the space. There are three foot by six windows, precast lintel and sills. Going, moving down to the first floor, what we've tried to do, we have aluminum steel columns here with aluminum cladding. These columns are similar to the columns along Malcolm X. And what we've tried to do, we've tried to simulate the same condition. This portion of the building is that basic, in that portion that has been infilled back in, I think, 2009 or eight, thereabout. And this is the entrance to the apartment. But what we've done here, we've created a solid door. And this was a recommendation from the community board that we should most likely make this a solid doors instead of glass because of the proximity to the bus stop. And so that, that's what we did. We maintained the transom right across the building, the storefront, door in the middle. And we've created a knee wall of about two feet high and equal spacing of the windows. Next slide. And this is basically a black and white of basic construction showing heights. And this is basic streetscape to show some sort of continuity between, along, along the Malcolm X. And as you see, there are a series of storefronts, which had been altered over the years. And what we felt is what we're proposing matches or is in keeping with what's in the area. Next slide. This, the rear facade of the building, the fire escape is existing. We're not proposing to change it. And it's, all we're doing is scraping, painting it. And what we've done, we've added windows. And these windows were added due to the interior configuration of the building to provide light and ventilation as per code. Next slide. Visibility from the, this is from the Macon, Macon Street side of the building. And this is, there's a large tree in the back. And this is what can be seen from that section. The materials here, that portion of the building that juts out is just concrete, the concrete blocks are just podged with gray stucco cement. These are just some details as to how we are proposing to construct a storefront. This is the column here that, if you go along Malcolm X, all the buildings, this is basically what the columns looks like. And what we're proposing and doing is to simulate the same thing. It's all aluminum cladding with a steel column behind. This is just another view. Okay, go ahead. There's some equipment on the roof, but these are not visible from the street. Okay, or corners up here, it's fiberglass. And this is basically construction. These are the details of the lower corners with a sign band for the storefront. In this area, and this is a blown up detail of it. This is our storefront, which set back about eight inches from the face of the building. Our window detail. Okay, the sill in the head of the window, they're precast. This is what's happening in the rear of the building at the first floor. What we've done, we've put a double door so that the tenants will have access to the rear yard. And these are photographs of some of the buildings in the area. Okay, this is our building. This is what existing building. These are similar buildings with two over two windows, basically six foot by three. And what we've done, we've just carried the same thing over in our building. They're just, yeah, photographs, our building, building there. And these are the views, the areas where these photographs were taken. These are up at the upper floor, similar. We're doing similar windows. And the upper floors along Malcolm X, these are the columns here. And what we've done, we've tried to just simulate the same condition. This is a better view of the column right here. In the back, and this is our building, this is that tree, adjacent to it is a two-family residence. And this is the only portion that's visible from the street in this portion here. Trees with, with leaves or without leaves. This is the condition now where the leaves are fewer. And this is our fire escape in place, not being changed. Yes, our new windows will, are visible at, only at the second floor, second and third floor. This, this is the condition now. Okay, that, that we're there. And what we're using are their full, full bricks, we're, without the masonry backup. My notation here that these are full-scale bricks, full-size bricks. And then, about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Michael, Commissioner Goldblum, go ahead.
Couple of quick questions. Is that an iron spot brick? Like, it looks kind of orange.
But the color may be a bit, these are dark, this is the brick color.
Right. Is it like a kind of a burnt orange or is it a red or?
It's like a burnt, or, well, it's maybe burnt orange, if you may call it that, but more on the red side.
Okay, good. And last, last question. The storefront door opens in. That's code, that's okay with code?
Yes, because of the basic square footage of it, it can be opened in. Yes, it can be.
What's, what's, what's the material of the, of the, of the high base under the storefront?
This is going to be aluminum cladding here.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I think we don't have any other questions at this moment. So we'll move to public testimony. I'll turn it over to Anthony Fabre, our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, to walk us through the testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so that we can identify you. Anthony?
Thank you. So we do have some signups. I will begin with Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you should be in the meeting.
I am. Thank you. There we go. Okay. Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. This proposal is an improvement over the current facade, but there are several issues which need closer examination. First, this building was never a masonry building, and as such, we strongly recommend that clabbered, even hardy board be considered for this facade. The lintel and sill dimensions require re-study to ensure there is proper legibility of bearing on each side of the openings, and bluestone as a material should be explored. We further recommend that the storefront's new columns be examined to create a better sense of what perceived load they purport to carry. As presented, there is no strong or heavy horizontal member above them expressed as either an I-beam or, or a designed entablature. The Historic District's Council commends the good intentions of this application, but it requires further guidance from the LPC staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do see that a representative from the community board has raised her hand, so I will bring her in. Evelyn, you should be in the meeting now. Evelyn, can you hear us?
Hello?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Evelyn Collier. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm with Community Board Three. Hold on, about to lose this thing. I'm sorry. Community Board Three, we had comments on the proposed alteration, which included there should be a more distinct differentiation between the residential and commercial entry door on the ground level. I think he addressed that. Consider a more historically contextual door at the rear elevation. Consider the height of the knee wall at the storefront. I think he was addressed that. Upper and lower cornice details should comply with LPC standards. Submit the exact brick, paint and stucco colors that would be used. The sidewall stucco color should be carefully chosen and submitted to, sent to CB3 Committee, but we haven't had time for that. The proposed alteration significantly upgraded the property and better aligned it with the district's form and character. Therefore, Brooklyn Community Board Three resolves to approve of the proposed alteration of the existing building. We got a full board support, forty-five in favor, and a committee vote with seven in favor. And we thank you for the participation in today's hearing.
Thank you, Evelyn. So we do have one more sign up, and that's George Calderaro. I will bring him in. Okay, George, can you hear us?
Yes. Great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the Victorian Society, New York. Prior to designation, the width of this building was increased by enclosing the historic alley and changing the window opening configuration, making it impossible to restore the historic facade here. But while the proposal is a vast improvement, we do not believe that this gives the applicant a free hand to rebuild the facade without reference to the commission's own storefront rules or the building's original details. The overall storefront configuration incorporating bulkheads and transoms is appropriate. However, bronzed, anodized storefront framing, a smooth metal panel in the bulkheads, and a fiberglass cornice right above the display window, eleven feet off the ground, are inappropriate on buildings of this age and type, and do not meet the commission's guidelines for storefront design. The guidelines state that it, quote, "If the building was constructed prior to 1900, the material of the new infill must match the historic infill. In most buildings of this age, the historic material was painted wood. The applicant should redesign the storefront to comply with the guidelines. The storefront framing should be painted wood and a storefront cornice in either painted wood or painted metal would be acceptable. Regarding the upper floors, we recommend six over six windows on the front facade, recalling the original sash and adding texture and detail to the streetscape. The VSNY has no problems with any of the proposed changes to the rear of the building, finding that they will be minimally, minimally visible from Macon, Macon Street, and will not eliminate any significant amount of historic material." Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for signups, and I don't see any other hands raised for public testimony.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, did we receive any additional public testimony, written testimony?
No other additional written testimony.
Okay, thank you. So I think first we'll ask the applicant to respond to comments that have been made in the testimony, and then we have some more questions. But I do want to just address the storefront guidelines so that, as you know, the rules are established to allow for staff level approvals. And so those storefront rules define a material that is eligible for a staff level approval for storefronts based on age. And so if a building was built prior to 1900, the staff can only approve a wood storefront. So just to sort of clarify that, that the guidelines are really rules that enable the staff to issue a permit. And anything that doesn't meet the rules comes to a public hearing for year review. And I think while you routinely approve work that isn't eligible for a staff level permit, I think in the question of buildings of this age, the, you know, there's a question of how do they evolve? Do they evolve continued into the 20th century? And how does that inform the material choices? But also, a lot of the discussion focuses around details when we are considering alternate materials. So, but let me turn to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to other comments made in the testimony.
Yes. Insofar as, let's talk about structural stability. In my drawing, there is an eight-foot, an eight by eight column that's going to be used to support the masonry. And there's a beam across, which is a ten-inch, ten by forty structural steel existing today. And basically, that will be able to structural support the, the new bricks as well as the storefront opening. So I think we've accounted for that. Yes, we can, if they wish, we could do a detail to show that, the, the new steel and the steel connection. We, we don't have a problem with that, so to speak. Insofar as, I do understand the, the regulations insofar as storefronts and the materials to be used. But my question, if we were, we are using wood cladding in this building, it just would not comply with the fire code because you're within the fire district. And yes, we can most likely make some sort of change with the material, just painted aluminum with reference to the storefront as well as the corners instead of using fiberglass. That we're willing to work with staff to come up with a workable solution to that. The entrance door to the apartment, yes, is a solid wood door. And I think that was addressed, or we have addressed that item, the solid wood door to the apartments. What were the other comment that he had? I wrote a couple of them down, but I think those were the major comments that he had.
Okay, all right. And we'll, we have some questions, so that may help, help flush some of it out too. Commissioner Goldblum?
I just wanted to ask a question. Does the applicant know what the original material of the facade in the 1940s tax photo was? Was that wood? Was it stucco?
I, I, the front looked like it was some sort of stucco material in the photographs, in the, in 1940 photograph.
Great.
With all stucco, that's what it looks like.
So you don't have any probes though, or anything that showed that? And it looks like it had a platform on the sides.
Nothing is left of the original building.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, other questions? Okay, all right, not seeing any questions. I think we can move to our discussion. So I'm starting to request to unmute all of you, so look for that. And Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I so second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. And as it's presented, this building has been altered over time and heavily altered at this point. And so this is a proposal to reclad and reconfigure the facade to address the change. to address the changes in width and facade design. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So I think it's acceptable and well within our norms to for an applicant to propose a complete re-envisioning of a building when it's been significantly defaced, as this one has. But I think it's an awful shame that they didn't take a greater opportunity to look back on the, on what the building was and take a little bit of inspiration from it. It would have been less expensive, and it would have been more historically appropriate to have gone with a stucco facade, to have taken inspiration from the very exuberant window headers and cornice and storefront. But that's not what we're being presented with, so, and I don't think that what we're being presented with is per se inappropriate as an approach. What I see here is a kind of generic New York street building with a kind of federal-ish, I don't know, a brick with a kind of standard surround. But I think the applicant should work with staff on a lot of the details. Going from the top down, the cornice in fiberglass is something that we generally have, or at least Michael Devonshire, it has often railed against, especially when it's relatively low to the ground as this is. It's a small building. And when it has as little detail as this does, it tends to highlight the plasticity of the product. So I think that they could look to either change the material to sheet metal or to add some detail to it so that it doesn't look as plastic as it will. The headers do look like they're from a stock book, which is not necessarily bad, but I think the applicant should work with staff on, on, on that. The cornice above the sign van is a little bit odd in that it stops and starts at the pilasters. So in a funny way, the pilasters are supporting the brick but not supporting the cornice. They can work with staff on that, too. The storefront itself, they, the applicant has indicated that they're willing to work with staff on adding detail to it so that if it doesn't necessarily, if it isn't necessarily made out of wood, it can resemble a traditional storefront a little bit better. In my experience, the DOB doesn't oppose wood windows. This would be a wood window. So I think that the applicant can probably talk with the DOB about making the wood storefront. This building had a very distinctive storefront with a cantilevered show window and a detailed base. Again, it would be less expensive probably to build it out of wood than it would out of aluminum. And certainly, if the applicant doesn't go that way, the applicant can work with staff on adding detail to what is now a fairly unadorned base and bulkhead.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I love the comments from Commissioner Goldblum. I think Commissioner Devonshire would, would demand or ask for more details, especially on the base, and I agree with the other comments as well.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
In a, in a sense, this is a new building. I mean, even the width of the building has changed over time. And the historic photograph is lovely, but I'm afraid that building is just not here anymore. I think Michael Goldblum sort of wrapped it up nicely by saying, "It could have been something else, but this is what we have." And I don't think what we have is conceptually inappropriate. But as has already been said by the two commissioners who have already spoken, and now the third by me, lots of the details need to be really closely worked out with, with staff. Again, there's nothing, in my judgment, conceptually wrong with the, with the brick two stories over a store. I mean, this is what New York's neighborhoods are all made of. But it just needs to be a little more robust in terms of the detail, in which I think our staff will provide perfectly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Lexi?
Yeah, this, this building has been, had been dramatically changed and certainly was an eyesore on the, on the street front. And to that end, I commend the applicant for creating a project that, you know, brings it to a place where it can be, you know, a positive addition to the landscape and speak what was there historically. That, that said, I do agree with my fellow commissioners. This is a great opportunity, or there is a great opportunity here to tweak this a little more and give it a little bit more distinctiveness and and make it, you know, an even better building that truly does contribute to the landscape. And so working with staff would help do that, and all the details that, you know, Michael and others mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum. And I think if, if those comments were taken seriously, when this project, this project would add to the existing fabric in a very good way.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I agree with the comments of Commissioners Goldblum and Bland. But, you know, in, in memory of Commissioner Devonshire, I'll be the one who says, "The devil is in the details." So let's just make sure they work with staff to get those right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose I agree with the fact that this is fine and that the details should be reviewed with staff. I do, though, wonder what really are kind of, our real guidance to applicants in this kind of a case should be or is? I mean, the historic building, for instance, had a three-window system, and they've gone to four. So what, so that changes things. Then the historic building had two storefronts with a center. And I just, I just wonder what aspects of the historic building language are we asking for, for applicants to, to observe or to recall? And if, and if not, then what exactly, sort of what are our criteria? I just, I'm not, I don't think I know. I mean, it's, it recalls some history of some buildings in historic time, but I'm not sure what else we can give them to give them that guidance.
So I think there's two things. One, again, if they, if they were restoring the facade, that would be a staff level approval, right? So anything that's not a restoration comes to you all by, by definition. And so in cases where buildings have been so heavily altered that they have lost any details, in this case, the building was widened, which is why the architect chose not to do three bays, because the proportions would be different than a narrower building with three bay penetration pattern. So, but in cases where the building is so heavily altered as it is in this case stripped of detail and widened, and in some cases, the designation report reflects that and identifies it as a no-style building or a non-contributing building. The commission has approved new facades that they deem appropriate to the historic district and not necessarily a restoration, because that's not the question before you. So we did one recently in Greenpoint, actually, another frame building in Greenpoint where the applicant was proposing a brick facade, and we had a discussion about that. And then there was another one more recently in, I forget which district, which was a house that did never matched a row, and they did a brick facade that kind of related to the adjacent row. So we have looked at the proposed design, details, composition, proportions in the context of the historic districts and typical buildings found in the district, and how they relate to those characteristics in the district in general, sort of treating it as a new building.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I agree with most of the comments from my fellow commissioners, so I won't repeat them, but I think they can work with staff on the details. And I think that, to Audie's point, this is a new building, basically. They could have gone a very different way, but they decided to go as this is appropriate, something a bit appropriate as well, but I think just the details.
All right. And Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I actually have a slightly different take in one way. I feel, you know, first, I want to compliment the applicant for really trying to bring the building back into a period of historic context. And we do permit a lot of alteration, obviously, when a building has very little left of it. I actually was thinking about the thing we just saw two weeks ago, where we're talking about demolishing a building that was no style and had lost most of its features. And where I had a lot of, you know, I had concerns about that. And it's just nice to see the applicant going in the direction of trying to do a restoration. So I do agree very much with Michael and others' comments about the need to have the details really worked out with the staff so that they are appropriate for the district and for this, you know, fitting in, in, in its time to a to a historic kind of presentation. And yes, it could have been even a totally new building, or it could have been a totally, you know, they were not required to restore it. So I, I don't think that, you know, things like, you know, having requiring a different, either window configuration or that they not be one over one would be appropriate here. But I do think that details of things like the cornice and the also the storefront, working with the staff can be much improved and really go try to accomplish what I think the applicant is seeking to do here, which is to have, you know, as historically appropriate building it can without trying to replicate the original building. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think we have support for this conceptually, but we'll ask them to work with the staff on all of the details, and in particular, the detailing at the both cornices and the pilasters that support the storefront cornice and the window headers and the storefront details. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion with that modification?
Yeah. Hold on a sec. All right, we're in public hearings. All right, good. Regarding two forty, two seventy-four Malcolm X Boulevard, Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District, the application is to modify, is to modify front facade, install storefront infill, modify windows, rear facade, install fire escape, rooftop mechanical equipment. I note that the building was originally constructed as a frame building approximately in eighteen seventy-nine, and that after the nineteen eighties, the building was altered by widening the building and installing a cement block facade, infilling the ground floor storefront, and modifying window openings. I further note that the Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District is characterized primarily by row houses, flats, and small apartment buildings with ground floor storefronts and institutional buildings primarily constructed in the late nineteenth century. And that the west side of Malcolm X Boulevard's streetscape features small mixed-use frame and masonry buildings, many of which have been highly altered. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the existing building is not one for which the district was designated, that the alterations will not eliminate significant historic fabric, the proposed composition of the Malcolm X Boulevard facade featuring a ground floor storefront, punched windows, and cornice is in keeping with the composition of late nineteenth century mixed-use buildings found within this historic district. That the front and rear facade's been reconstructed resulting in the loss of original frame walls and all significant architectural features. Therefore, the use of masonry for the proposed facades, though different from the original construction, will be consistent with other buildings in the streetscape. That the proposed primary facade materials palette, including a red brick blend and limestone-colored cast stone with metal storefront, fiberglass cornice and metal-type wood windows, all with black finish, will harmonize with the materials and finishes of buildings found on Malcolm X Boulevard and throughout this historic district. That the ground floor storefront infill and featuring decorative metal piers, display windows, entrance doors, sign van, profiled cornice will be compatible with the ground floor commercial spaces of buildings throughout the historic district, that the penetration pattern of the primary facade featuring double-hung windows with simple cast stone windows and sills will be proportionate to the widened facade. The bracketed up the cornice would be typical of other historic buildings found within the district, and that the stucco-clad rear facade with punched window openings would be in keeping with rear facades on buildings of this scale throughout this historic district. However, I recommend the applicant work with staff to refine the details and proportions of the storefront infill and the cornice and the brick facade with its precast detailing to be more in keeping with traditional buildings found within this historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Delighted to second it.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lexi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work very closely with the staff as you develop those details. Thank you. So that concludes our morning session, and we're going to break for lunch. We'll come back at ten after one, and we'll resume the afternoon session at that time. So Commissioners, just turn your video and audio off.